Yeah, twenty-two years old than I am. Okay, what?
Is it? I have one.
Right here. Yeah. Good evening. Good evening. It's now six P M. Like to get the meeting started on time. Then thank you all for coming this evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order and please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance through the flag of the United States of America and through the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So may I have a roll call, please?
Counselor Novak?
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Present.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor Olson?
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here.
Your Honor? Could I have a point of personal privilege, please?
Please, go.
Okay, Rich?
I hear you're a birthday boy, so happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Alex. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Oh, it's on now.
I didn't give you the speech about being old.
Well, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Rich Kellum, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is two proclamations. Thank you for that very much, though. Disability Pride Month and Parks and Recreation Month. Disability Pride Month, July 2022, whereas the American Disabilities Act, ADA, we all know it as, was passed by the United States Congress on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities and whereas the ADA is recognized as one of the most important civil rights laws in history and whereas the ADA prohibits discrimination based on disability, requiring employers to provide reasonable accommodations and ensuring that public accommodations meet accessibility requirements and whereas the City of Albany affirms the dignity of all individuals with disabilities, supports equity and refuses to tolerate acts of discrimination and hatred and whereas the people with disabilities continue to face discrimination for being who they are and continue to be targets of violence and harassment, yet continue to persist through the support and efforts of the disabled community. Community agencies, businesses, and individuals and allies, individual allies and whereas Disability Pride empowers people with disabilities to reject negative perceptions, combat ableism, bias, and discrimination, and affirm their self-worth as individuals with value, talent, and significance. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim and recognize June, July 2022 as Disability Pride Month in Albany, Oregon. Thank you. Oh, and I encourage all people in our community to join in celebrating diversity and promoting inclusion and equity, and I further encourage people to advocate for the removal of discriminatory policies and practices toward any group of people. In witness whereof, I hereto want to set my hand and cause the seal of Albany, the City of Albany, Oregon, to be affixed this 22nd day of June 2022. Alexander D. Johnson, Mayor. Want to read Parkson one?
Sure. Parks and Recreation Month, July 2022, whereas parks and recreation programs are integral parts of communities throughout this country, including Albany, Oregon, and whereas parks and recreation programs promote time spent in nature, which improves mental health, increasing cognitive performance and well-being, and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's disease, and whereas parks and recreational facilities encourage physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles, and whereas park and recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development, and whereas parks and recreational facilities increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, attraction, and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, Oregon, do hereby proclaim and recognize July 2022 as Parks and Recreation Month and encourage all residents and visitors to use Albany's parks and recreational facilities and to participate in parks and recreation programming. In witness whereof, I've hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this 22nd day of June 2022. Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. It's my honor to introduce you to Fire Chief Shane Wooten. He has a special presentation from Albany Fire Department Annual Awards. Chief Wooten.
All right. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, and all past and present members of Albany Fire Department and your families. It's good seeing you all this evening. So for everybody else, for the last few years, we have recognized individuals who have exceeded expectations and through their actions and contributions have made the Albany Fire Department better at meeting our department's mission of preventing and protecting from harm. All these individuals recognized this evening embody the values of our department and some of our values, counsel, just to remind you, that we be community-minded, we embrace diversity, we're concerned, genuinely concerned, for the health and welfare of those around us, we live with honesty and integrity, and that we are always professional and practice teamwork. The department accepts nominations from our employees, then the entire department votes for who they believe is most deserving. Each year, we have amazing candidates, but unfortunately, only one is selected. In addition to those awards, as chief, I give out what is known as the chief's award. I know that's a pretty creative name for an award, but that's the best I could do, to individuals who I believe have positively impacted our department and our community. Normally, we have an awards banquet in February when we're able to recognize these individuals, but this past February, we were right in flux with changes with COVID, and we weren't able to hold the banquet, but we still wanted to publicly recognize some of these individuals. Unfortunately, given the time of year, though, only about half were able to attend, so I will go through just quickly those that were not able to attend and just say one sentence about each one of them, and then we'll call up each other award recipient, one after another, so we can recognize you. So Medic of the Year for Albany Fire Department was Frank Clifton. Frank, if you know him, many of you do, he is extremely professional, calm, and his empathy is second to none. Apparatus of the Year was Keith Gillespie. Keith is considered a regional expert in water and rope rescue, and he regularly trains our department as well as he trains people worldwide. Lieutenant of the Year was Alex Chang for putting others first by giving of his time, knowledge, and experience. And then we have kind of an award we call the humanitarian award. That is a category that we want to give to somebody who really kind of practiced service above him or herself and puts others ahead of themselves. So it's really a special award. So humanitarian of the year for Albany Fire Department was Chris McNeese for his kindness, generosity, and putting others ahead of himself. So for people who are here that we'd like to recognize, if I, oh, one more chief's award that was unable to attend. I'd like to recognize Commander David Solomon from American Legion Post 10 with a chief's award. He was unable to make it tonight. We'll connect with him at the Legion and give him this award. I'm giving him the award for his dedication and patriotism in remembering those lost in the attacks of 9/11. He continues to live out the promise to never forget. He is truly an asset to our community, as is the entire American Legion Post 10. So with that, Jessica Jakovic, our firefighter of the year, please come up. All right, so firefighter Jakovic says here Albany Fire Department presents this award for performing well under pressure, helping others, and being the example to follow. So I just want to tell you from my perspective how much I appreciate you and how much you do for our fitness committee and the health of our people, and then also, Jess does some things that just people don't realize. So for example, is it the next two days you'll be over in Lebanon at the Lynn County Young Women's Fire Academy, firefighter academy, training the next generation of firefighters? Jess is a huge asset to our department. I remember the day that you thought about coming here from Alaska, and we are so thankful that you made that choice. So also, Jess will be, you gotta go to one more awards banquet, I'm sorry, but you will also be as our firefighter of the year, the Chamber of Commerce, Countrywide Financial Fire Public Safety Officer of the Year come the fall. So anyway, Jess, congratulations. All right, next, Lieutenant Joe Brier. Lieutenant Brier is given the chief's award. Joe, for your commitment and contributions above and beyond the call of duty toward the betterment of the Albany Fire Department and our community. Joe, I wanted to give this to you. You know how I feel about you and the job that you do, and Joe, I used to be his battalion chief way back when, and when there was a really bad scene and things weren't going maybe the way that we wanted them to go, Joe would be the type of person that you would want right next to you making decisions. Cool, calm, decisive. So that's just one piece of how you contribute to our department. The other piece is when I went to the management team and asked, hey, who's somebody that we think is just really like doing a lot for AFD? Like, everybody threw out, oh, Brier, Brier. And so not only, I think everybody is seeing what you're doing for us, so thank you very much and congratulations. Retired Chief Tedish, I'm sorry to do this to you. Chief Tedish, giving you this chief's award for dedicating countless hours of preservation work toward keeping the history of the Albany Fire Department alive. So a little bit aside from this award, we have a group of retirees that have really kind of engaged into the department or engaged, re-engaged with the department and have been doing things in preserving our history, whether it's preserving our fire trucks or preserving old pictures, old newspaper articles, and Chief Tedish is awesome at that. He's involved with the museum, and it just carried over into helping out in our department. And so I'm extremely grateful that you're willing to do that and willing to come around the department, and I'm also extremely grateful because thirty years ago, from July 1st, you hired me with the Albany Fire Department. That has nothing to do why I'm giving you this award, maybe a little. Thank you, chief. Lastly, Sandy Roberts, Deputy Fire Marshal Sandy Roberts. So Sandy, this is for your tireless dedication on behalf of the Albany Fire Department and our community. Your contributions are invaluable and immeasurably improve the safety of those we serve. Okay, so Sandy, you're awesome. You know that. I can't tell you that enough. Sandy is the face of the department, and so when she's out talking to people or engaging with kids in the schools, that's who they identify as Albany Fire Department is, and I honestly couldn't think of a better person to do that, to be the face of our department. On kind of a personal note, related to work, not related to work, is your involvement with the state incident management teams. I was on the Eagle Creek Fire, part of one of the state's incident management teams, and I remember Sandy being offered an opportunity to go to act as a PIO, Public Information Officer, and Sandy, you were hesitant. I remember you were nervous but excited for the opportunity. Well, since the Eagle Creek Fire, Sandy has really identified herself throughout the state as one of the premier PIOs, and people call her and look to her for her expertise, and we get her here at Albany Fire Department, which is awesome that we have that high level of an expert. So Sandy, I can't thank you enough. Congratulations. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, chief, and congratulations to all recipients, and I personally have worked with Sandy, and I really do appreciate your participation and leadership in the community. So thank you. Okay, public hearings. Public hearings, the next on the agenda, item five, persons wanting to provide testimony during public hearings at city council meetings may, number one, email written comments to the staff contact listed below, including the name and subject of the public hearing before noon on the day of the meeting. Number two, testify virtually during the public hearings and register by emailing the staff contact listed below before noon the day of the meeting with your name, phone number, and if you are speaking for or against or neutral of a project or subject, the mayor may call upon you, call upon those who have registered to speak. Or three, appear in person at the meeting and register to speak during the sign-up sheet on the table.
Mayor?
Yes?
Before we start our hearings, may I make a note about an agenda change?
Is that the names?
No, it's the supplemental agenda that came out today. So that item, which is the consideration of a single-source purchase of law enforcement equipment, if we could add that to Agenda Item 10, Staff Reports, as 10D.
10 Delta?
Correct.
Well, I can do that for you.
Thank you.
10CD, okay. And this is the equipment purchase request. It's not on there, I'm adding it to for this right here.
Did I say there's already a 10B on?
No, D, Delta. Okay, thank you. So item A is a sale of supplemental surplus property, 401 Main Street, and this is the public hearing that was left open from the last time, and so next on the agenda is continued public hearing for the sale of surplus property of 401 Main Street. The public hearing considered, continued from May 25, 2022, in city council meeting. Does the staff have a report? I have Chris Bailey on for that. There she comes. Thank you, Director Bailey.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a continuation of the public hearing we had sometime in May about the sale of 401 Main Street. At that time, the council directed us to hold open the public hearing and see if there was other interest in the property. You should have received today a packet that summarized the offers. We now have three offers for the property. There's Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Letman, who both had offers in last time, and we have an additional offer from Mr. Mitchell, who's also submitted his proposal. Also in the packet is everything we received from these parties regarding their proposed use and intentions on the site. None of those have been through the land use process yet, but it should indicate what their ideas are for their use of this property should they purchase it from the city. The council can, basically, you can do what you want. You're not obligated to take the highest offer, but you can if that's what you decide is most important. You're not obligated to take the first offer. You can direct staff to negotiate to whomever, whichever offer you would like us to, or you can reject all of the offers, and we can come back and talk about what you would like us to do next at another time. That's basically all I have, unless you have questions for me or for Sean Kidd, the city attorney regarding the process. Otherwise, I'll stop there.
Counsel, do we have questions for Director Bailey? Counsel Olson?
Did you see you sent us literature from the people that were applying?
Yes, Counsel Olson, you should have a packet that has a summary table on the first page and then all of the documents that we received. It might be electronic because we were continuing to receive information very late today, so I think it was emailed to the entire council this afternoon.
Well, I may have clicked right past along with the 300 other items I had I was getting rid of.
Sure.
So I'm afraid I'm not up to snuff on knowing just what's being proposed.
I can give you the summary table information off the, I have it here if you're interested.
Oh, that'd be good.
Okay. Oh, and looks like the city clerk has a printed packet for you.
Oh, thank you. I don't know if I can adjust?
Sure.
Take this in in the minutes or so?
Okay. Well?
Can you give me a digest of it?
I will. I'll do my best. So the first offer on the list is Mr. Letman, Scott Letman, and his proposal is to construct a relatively small retail space, 1,650 square foot retail space, but also three townhouse units on the site, and his offer is $52,500 for the property. Next on the list is Mr. Mitchell. His proposal is to construct a pre-engineered, single-level commercial structure with an outdoor patio area for restaurant, retailer, other use, office use, and he's offering $25,000 for the property. And then the final offer on your table is Mr. Baldwin, Benjamin Properties, and his offer is, use is the same as last time, which is to use this property along with the property that's adjacent to the south, which he has plans for commercial space, and this property would supplement that space and provide parking and other infrastructure needs for that use. And his offer, he submitted a new offer of $50,000. So we have $52,500, $25,000 or $50,000 are the monetary amounts. The uses are all, they're a little bit different. They're allowed in the zoning that's there, but other than that, it's difficult for staff to make any assessment of the proposed use without really sitting down with an application or a pre-application and going through their plans, but there's no, there's no obvious proposal that use, proposed use that would not comply with the existing zoning at least. So we, that bar is, we've crossed that bar, so that's good.
Well, thank you very much, Director.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor. Thank you, Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, after reading them, I must say it's intriguing that Mr. Letman, what he has planned for it, and it sounds like it might be going toward what we're looking for is affordable housing type thing and smaller businesses and stuff, that that area is, you know, is fairly busy with the Carriage House Plaza across the street, so I just find that very intriguing, and it was the highest bid, and as a counselor, I always think that we shouldn't be giving property away, and I think that's a good use for it. I'm sure the others would probably do something. I didn't get a chance to read them. I got them too late, and I read them just before I got here, but I saw that where there's the townhouses and business area. How we can do it, I don't know, but I think I would be probably in favor of that so that it'd be a little bit more affordable housing.
So Mayor and Director Bailey, this would, if there's no more questions for Director Bailey, then there might be somebody, maybe one of the proposers would want to speak and talk to the council, and then after that, it would be before we deliberate, we would want to close the public hearing?
Correct. We are, nobody signed up to speak.
Okay.
Well, we have one of the proposers here in the audience.
One of them, who's that? Is that Yan? So would you like to speak? I think you came before, correct? You spoke last time?
He did.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd just like to highlight the key points that I made in my written offer, which I submitted on 5-5. My plans for renovation of the big green warehouses the school district owns, I bought them four or five years ago on 503 Main, are substantially complete, and they've baked in the design of 401 Main as a parking lot. I honestly, you know, I'm a contractor and I tend to move forward without maybe getting all my i's dotted, my t's crossed. I didn't anticipate any interest in this 401 Main lot. I've been looking at it and talking about it and thinking on it for quite some time. As such, I've had the property surveyed. I've paid $11,000 to have the property surveyed. I've had a civil engineer lay it out. I've had an architect and a civil engineer do code studies and traffic studies. While I respect Mr. Letman's success and knowledge of development, I'm scratching my head how he can find the parking to put a 1,650 retail and three townhouses on that property, much less physically locating it there. We, I don't see how you'd get parking. It seems to me that having done quite a bit of research and having hired professionals do the research as well, not possible. So, you know, again, given the insufficient, inefficient triangle shape of the lot, the designated zoning requirements, location of the property line of my warehouses, which is 20 feet into the property, setback and buffer requirements, vehicular access standards, that given use seems unlikely. A likely use would be like a coffee kiosk, but a restaurant with a drive-through are not allowed in that in a zoning from what I read. I am aware that, you know, other offers have been proffered. Obviously, Bob Mitchell knows what he's doing as well, so again, I'm just genuinely curious how they're getting parking on that, on that piece. I have, because I have a significant amount invested in architectural and civil design right now, I did up my offer to 50. You know, had I known other offers are going to be more, I'd have offered more because I'm pretty far down the road now. My plan will visually and economically enhance San Am Road and Main Street neighborhood, increase the property's value and property tax in the near future. Want to get the project completed this year, and that's what I have scheduled out. Incorporation of this vacant lot into my renovation of the green warehouses supports the redevelopment of those warehouses from an old warehouse use to a community business use. My proposed design shares a common access and egress onto San Am Road for the three properties, my property, 1224 San Am, where Baldwin General is located, 503 Main Street warehouses, and 401, would all share my driveway to 1224, so it eliminates the curb cuts there that are closer to the intersection and increases the distance from that intersection to a driveway by 60 feet, so makes the neighborhood safer, the driving pattern safer there. And my proposed development includes a pocket park at the intersection of Main and San Am. This pedestrian amenity will both visually and functionally enhance the neighborhood as well as provide improved vision clearance for as well as provide improved vision clearance for greater safety at that intersection. I go to work that way most every day. And when the church was there and you pull up to the intersection, if there's a big development there, you're, you know, your bumper's going out there and as people come through the roundabout and they start to pick up speed there by Whittaker flooring, there's always this kind of back and forth, is the guy going, is he not going? Because of the, the visual impairment there. So that's my case. You know, I'm a few dollars and cents short of Scott where he turned in his latest bid. But I am ready to move. I've got my plans done as soon as I can get, if I am favored with the decision on this, I will be moving quickly to get my pre-op meeting going and get my packet together and submit it for permits so I can get construction underway. So thank, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. I appreciate that. Counsel, any questions? Hold up, Mr. Baldwin. No questions, right? Questions for Mr. Baldwin, Counsel Bartholomew? Okay, so do I need to close the public hearing now?
Maybe just see if there's anyone else that wants to speak.
Does anybody else want to speak? Not, this is a different time.
About this particular topic.
Oh, who's this back here? Is, are you Mr. Mitchell? Oh, Tom Cordier, okay. On this particular topic, Mr. Cordier?
Well, anybody can talk in a public hearing.
I just want to know what you're going to speak about. Is that okay? I can ask him what he's speaking about, right?
Sure.
Okay, then.
Well, we're holding a public hearing about that piece.
And I just ask him what he's speaking about. So go ahead, Mr. Cordier, please.
Name is Tom Cordier, 2240 Northwest Park Terrace in Albany, North Albany. The name Letman is very well-known in this community. And although he's made a bid for this property, I don't know, and I don't know if you know, whether he intends to try to get more CARA money to fund his proposal. And if, if, if that is the case, that should be disclosed to this body. And to the extent that he may want to do that, he should be telling you that ahead of time so you know what the total cost to the community is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cordier. Appreciate that. Does anyone else like to speak on this topic? Counsel?
I'd like to ask a question of our attorney, but should we close the public hearing before I ask you a question?
That's my next question. Thank you. So I close this public hearing on June 22nd at 6:32 PM. Go ahead, Counselor.
I'm wondering if we have ever auctioned off any of our property. Is that a possibility? We have three very interested parties. And it's hard to know how much to offer in order to be successful.
So to mine, I don't know of any time we've auctioned off property since 2013, we have not. I don't know if we did before that time before I came here or not, but I don't know of any that we did.
You know whether it's legal to do that or not?
This, this proceeding here is about as close to it as, as we've come, I think. By having, by having the meeting continued and it being published and having people have an opportunity to come back and bid like this. But the way the council, the way when we sell surplus property, the council, all they have to do is declare it surplus and then have a public hearing and then they can sell it however they want, to whoever they want, for whatever they want, as long as it's done in public. So.
So if we invited the three interested parties to be here at a public hearing, they'd be able to verbally say how much they'd like to pay for it and, and bid one against another. I, I hate to make it unfortunate for, let's say unfortunate for anybody. But here we are, three people that are interested in it. And it's kind of a blind situation for them. I'm curious.
Yeah, I think in this case, I think all three have had, had the opportunity to come tonight. I think Mr., I know Mr. Letman knew this meeting was tonight. I'm not sure about Mr. Mitchell. I didn't know about that offer until today. So.
Counsel Johnson?
As far as the, the CARA funding, I mean, that's basically closed right now anyway. But my question would be, we're just selling the property. It doesn't require the buyer to do anything with it. So in other words, if it's not feasible, if, if we choose someone and it's not feasible for what they said, that's okay. I mean, we're not, we can't do that. Is that correct?
So if, this is not a CARA meeting, so.
Yeah, the CARA is, that's okay.
Disclosed, right? So my understanding is that we're going to make a decision on who we're going to sell the property to. If he wants to come back later and appeal for something, that's a different discussion.
Well, and, and we can't, we can't require them to say, okay, this is what you're going to do.
Right. We can't require them to tell us what they're going to get from the court.
Okay, that's what I meant, I'm going to say.
Am I correct on that? We can't demand them to tell us if they want additional monies.
We can't, right. We can't tell, we can't require them to do that unless part of the condition of the sale is to enter into a development agreement with the, with the buyer.
Right.
Which we usually don't do.
We're not doing that in this case. So Counsel, Counsel Olson?
Well, I think we should remember that we do not have to sell it to the highest bidder. We could decide to sell it to the best proposal.
Agreed. I think, well, you guys understand it? You first and then Counsel Kupczynski, Counsel Novak.
Thank you. I just want to say I think that Mr. Baldwin made a good case. And I appreciate the fact that he was here earlier in May and also again today. I feel, I, I could, I could feel good about any of these, but I just really appreciate the fact that he's made an effort to be here. And I think he's made a very strong case for what he wants to do. So I'm in favor of his proposal.
Counsel, Counsel Kupczynski?
Yes, I'm echoing what Counsel Johnson said earlier. I'm very intrigued by Scott Letman's proposal with the three townhouses. Whether or not that's feasible, that's still open for discussion. That being said, a question for you, when you were wearing a different hat at the county, would three townhouses on that lot on top of the retail space make it more valuable from a taxing standpoint than just a warehouse or retail space on the bottom?
I wasn't an appraiser, but most definitely because it'd be more square footage and it would be taxed as new building. And so definitely, yes, it would.
Okay.
Counsel Smith? Counsel Smith, you have something?
Yes, I do.
Please.
Mr. Baldwin's presentation makes the most sense to me. It's, it's very well thought out. It's planned. He's done a lot of homework to make sure that what he has in mind will fit there. The, joining his property to the Botress Building, the green warehouse, makes sense. I can see it happening. I, I have to, I'm not good at doing math in my head and I'm not an architect, but it's hard for me to imagine, as Mr. Baldwin said, how the other uses that have been proposed would fit on that property. The, of course, three townhouses are three more dwelling units and that's a wonderful idea. I don't see it working there. And I'm not an expert, I admit. But I, I think that his proposal is the, has the most thinking behind it, the most planning behind it. It can be done quickly, adding, adding value to the property more quickly than, than anybody else proposing to us. And it, it, it's, I can see it. I can see it in my mind with the, with the pocket park and, and all it, I love the idea of sharing the driveway for all three areas. To get one less driveway on that road is a wonderful idea. So I'm, I'm strongly in favor of Mr. Baldwin's presentation.
Okay, so I've heard from everyone. Would a counsel like to make a motion?
No.
Oh, Counsel Bartholomew, I'm sorry. Speak up.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I also would like to share my thoughts about this proposals or various proposals. I listened and read carefully the documents. And as been pointed out, Mr. Baldwin has presented the, in my opinion, the best case, although I would have liked to have seen more affordable housing, of course. It doesn't seem like a feasible area or situation for that, especially when it comes to traffic congestion. So I, my, I am in favor of the Baldwin proposition. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel Bartholomew. Please let me know, just call me and we'll, you know, say something when you're ready to speak. Counsel, do we make a motion?
I would move to sell the property to Mr. Baldwin.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Don't we have a question? After you have a second, there's comment time?
No, you can comment, yes.
Okay. Well, I'm going to, I'm going to vote against it. I'm going to vote against it simply because we're not giving Mr. Letman the opportunity to show that he can, in fact, can do what he said he was going to do and that we get raked over the coals multiple times for not returning enough value to the city on some of the things we do. And I see a very, very minor dollar amount on the bid. But the return on the investment then, because of adding the extra property to the tax rolls, I think is what sways it to me for voting for Scott Letman. So I'm going to vote no on this one.
Okay. Me too.
You're going to vote no as well?
Yes.
So can we do a roll call, please? Allison?
Counselor Novak?
Yes.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Yes.
Counselor Kupczynski?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
That's four yeses and two nos.
Thank you, Allison. I appreciate it. So motion passes?
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay. The next, on the public hearing, so do I need to open a new public hearing for the next one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I need to recuse myself for this portion of the proceedings.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a public hearing for, at 6:42, Community Development Block Grant 2022 Action Plan. And Beth Freeland will be speaking. She's remote.
Hi, can you guys all hear me okay?
Yes, yes, I can.
Excellent. So I have a short staff report. And then I apologize that the public hearing is required for the action plan, which is why it is included in its entirety in your agenda packet. And then traditionally, the council has approved by resolution the adoption of the plan before we submit that to HUD. So it's included as an attachment to that resolution. So I'm going to share my screen now. Are you guys seeing the presentation?
Oh, there's, yeah, there you go. There, we see it now.
Okay, thank you. So like I mentioned, I'm just speaking on the 2022 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant. And I just wanted to start by kind of covering a little bit of the program requirements for the Community Development Block Grant. We're required to have the five-year strategic plan. This plan will be coming to an end this year, so we will be working on the next five-year plan here soon. And then the annual plan, report and certifications. So right now, we're discussing the annual action plan. And also included with that are the required certifications by HUD, which are at the end of the action plan in your agenda packet. And then we're also required to do an assessment of the impediments to fair housing, which we'll be doing in conjunction with our next five-year strategic plan. And then we also have to follow the citizen participation plan, which includes having a public hearing at the 30-day comment period for both the action plan and then the end of the year report, as well as like our five-year strategic plan. And then finally, we're just required to follow all the federal regulations that come along with this funding. So I just wanted to kind of briefly go over the allocation that's proposed in our 2022 Action Plan. So in the table, you can see the different goals that have been prioritized in this upcoming action plan. And then what programs or projects or activities are funded, are proposed for funding in the 2022 plan to advance those goals in the next program year. So we are proposing, the Community Development Commission evaluated these applications. And these are their recommendations to counsel for this plan. And it begins with the continuing to fund the housing rehabilitation loans for low and moderate income homeowners. And then, then that is through Dev Northwest. And then the next piece is just carrying forward the funding from previous years for the Creating Housing Coalition for their projects that will develop affordable housing. And the funding that we have dedicated to that would go towards the property clearance. They're also proposing that funding be used for the Burkhardt Park Fitness Court. And then for several public services and shelters. So first of all, they're proposing funding for the Jackson Street Youth Shelter, the Senior Companion Program through Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments, the shelter, emergency shelter for domestic abuse survivors through the Center Against Rape and Domestic Violence, and the therapeutic childcare and family support through Family Tree Relief Nursery. And then we also have carryover funding for small business grants. Previously, the city has been in charge of implementing that. But we're hoping, we're planning to work with the Oregon Cascades West Council of Government in their economic development wing to better utilize those funds to support small businesses. And then finally, there's money allocated towards the planning and administration of this program. So as a part of our action plan, we're required to do citizen participation. And that has included working with the Community Development Commission and their expertise and experience. We also consulted with 30 different agencies in Albany. We attend and participate in local community groups such as HART and the Hispanic Advisory Council. And we take the information that we learn at those meetings and incorporate that into the plan. And then we've also done our 30-day comment period and hearing notice, published and distributed the plan. And tonight is the final public hearing, an opportunity for the public or to comment on the plan. And thus far, we have received one written comment from Ann Craig, representing Jackson Street Youth Services in support of the plan. Do you have any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Counsel Novak?
Yes, thank you. In reviewing this plan, I mean, I can see that someone did a lot of work, but I am at a loss to have any real information. Many times over, I think 31, there were the words, what are the expected outcomes of the consultation? And there was no information. I feel like I don't know, in spite of many, many pages here, I'm not seeing for sure who's being helped. How many individuals? How many families? I, I'm at a loss to support something when I don't see any actual data telling me who's being helped, how many people in, you know, Samaritan Health Services opened a 16-bed facility. That's 16 beds. That's something concrete, but I'm not seeing that. What are the anticipated outcomes for consultations with HUD or any of the other agencies and groups listed in this report? And forgive me if that information is somewhere and I'm just missing it. But that's, hard data is what helps me make a decision. And I'm, I've read through this whole thing and I'm kind of at a loss to know how many people are being helped, who's being helped in all these organizations that are asking to be part of this CDBG grant. What can they show for what they would do with the money or who have they helped in the past? For instance, Helping Hands, we all have a lot of respect for Helping Hands. I think they submitted a bid, I mean, filled out an application. I, I think it would be helpful for me if I could see the applications and, and see what these people are proposing to do with these monies. Who, who applied? What are they asking for? How much? Who do they propose to help? Who've they helped in the past? they propose to help, who've they helped in the past? I, I mentioned Helping Hands. How many people's lives have been transformed through the work of Helping Hands? How many people have left a life on the street and been, been able to get up on their own two feet? I, I would really appreciate, in ninety-six pages of information, getting more in the way of, of actual hard data. That would really be helpful to me. Thank you.
Sure. If I can answer one part of that question at least, is that in terms of the outcomes for what we've proposed to fund, you can find that, I believe, would be on page thirty-seven of your packet, there's a table that shows the goals and then the goal outcomes that are expected from that. It doesn't answer your complete question about all of the applicants and what they had proposed, but it will show what we anticipate from those that we are proposing do get funding, if that is helpful to you.
Thank you kindly. I'm flipping back to thirty-seven to take a look. I appreciate that.
Any other councilor have questions? Yes. Yeah, go ahead, please. Ann's gonna.
Put the microphone very close to.
Yeah, closer.
Closer. Can't hear you.
You can move the.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
My mic wasn't on, sorry. On pages thirty-six and thirty-seven of the action of your packet, there is a summary table that shows the projected outcomes for the activities. And HUD has a specific format for these reports, and unfortunately, we have to follow that format. While we consulted with around thirty agencies and individuals and groups, not all of them applied for funding. The Community Development Commission was established to serve that role, to evaluate needs in the community and also evaluate those applications. We can certainly send you all the applications that were received, but the Community Development Commission received applications, scored applications, presentations were given to the Community Development Commission, and the Community Development Commission, based on the quality of the applications, made some recommendations, and those are included in your plan. So it's the role of the Community Development Commission to do some of that work, but those meetings are open to, for anyone to attend. And we are happy to provide more information to the council around this area, because I know that these funds, while little, are doing a lot of good in our community. And the Helping Hands, for example, they aren't receiving funding in this year, but they're wrapping up a project with Community Development Block Grant Funds that are replacing a roof on one of their dormitories right now. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any other councils have questions? Thank you, Ann. Any other councils have questions? Well, Counselor Smith?
Ms. Catlin, when the applicants make, fill out their applications year to year, those applications include data, like we're talking about, how many people they've helped, what they, what's been done with the money, who, who got this and who got that. I noticed in the, in the report that Ms. Friedlander wrote, it also included, well, more direct figures from COT, for example, the number of individuals who've been helped and to find housing or to be provided with other direction. So that, that was in there. But, but those, that data is in the formal applications, correct?
Yes, when agencies apply, and we had a lot of applications, and the public services requests are very limited in funding because HUD restricts that to fifteen percent of the total awards, so we have around fifty thousand dollars. We had six applications and funded four out of the six of, of those applications. COT didn't apply, but like I said, the action plan has its prescriptive, and we have to provide narrative even for programs that we're not funding, because this plan format is used for other sources of federal funds that we don't receive. But it is a great way to really get to know what's going on in your community. So we've had lots of conversations around programs that the city didn't receive funding requests for, or that can't fund because we don't have the right source of funding. And those programs are, many of them are carried out by Community Services Consortium because they receive emergency solutions grants. And then there's another source of funding that we don't receive called Home, which helps build housing. So we don't get to skip any questions, unfortunately, and we just wanted you to see exactly what we propose you allow us to submit to HUD.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselor? Counselor Johnson?
I kind of agree with Counselor Novak. We always get these reports, and it's like, okay, we get a lot of data, and it's there, but who makes the decision on if you have, you have six applications, four get helped? Who makes that decision?
The Community Development Commission scored and evaluated the proposals, and they're recommending, this is their recommendation to you.
Okay. And then it says here on page thirty-six, okay.
Bessie, can you speak closer?
Oh, I'm sorry. I could hear me. Improve existing affordable housing, increase affordable housing opportunities, reduce homelessness. I mean, I am sorry, I don't know how a hundred thousand dollars could do that. So I'm just wondering, where does the money go? What do we do? Just hand the people money?
No, all of the, all of the grants are reimbursement grants. So agencies have to spend the money, demonstrate their performance outcomes before we will pay them any money. They also provide quarterly reports to us and annual reports, and we'd be happy to send you more information. And knowing that there is more interest in this than there has been in the past, we are happy to provide more information in your packet. The Community Development Commission packets are available online, but if there's something specific, you're welcome to meet with staff, or you can attend Community Development Commission meetings.
So I don't, I'm not sure if you guys realize the makeup of the Community Development Commission, they're professionals in several different disciplines, mortgage, housing, grant writing, there are professionals in their industries. And the recommendations they make is after scouring hours of these applications, having several meetings, two-hour meetings to go over each of these applications, and this is the recommendation they send back. Our job is not to get into the weeds. If you would like to come to those meetings, they're public, but the recommendation by that board is what they recommended based on the information they received and the research they did. And so I think Ms. Catlin has explained that. And so we're, we don't do sausage. We don't see how the sausage is made, right? So that bogs us down into things that takes us away from our primary responsibilities. So Counselor Smith?
To add to that, this is a good example of an advisory board or commission that is charged with a specific type of advice to give us, dependent on their particular areas of expertise, which they're chosen to represent. And they're, they're chosen because they know what they're looking at when they review these applications. We have complained in the past about boards and commissions that don't do anything, that never make recommendations, that don't have enough to do. This commission works hard, and it's, it's a very concentrated function. It's laser-focused on the task at hand, and we need to be grateful to them for doing hard work that we don't have time for, or that we haven't made the time for. They, we expect to get advice and recommendations from our appointed boards and commissions, and they have done that. They've been doing that for years with, ever since we've been an entitlement community. So I trust them. I know many of them, and I know that they're, they know what they're looking at when they see the applications.
I was gonna say, and, and I agree, Counselor Smith, I, it does come down to trust. It's just sometimes you, you read this stuff, and you think like, well, I'd kind of like to know where this is going or, or what it is. But you're right, it's, they're the experts and we're not. So thank you for that.
Ann?
Based on your input, we will, next year, make sure that we provide a different type of summary, maybe an executive summary for you before providing the whole plan. And next year, it's actually going to be a five-year strategic plan, and we would welcome a planning session with the council to help identify those priority needs. Once we've done some of that research and analysis and figure out how to fit that in, it's gonna be a busy, busy next few months. But we, we're gonna be talking about priority needs a little later this, this evening. And you will be heard, and we will do what we can with the limited funding that we have. But we can change our priority needs for the next five years and, and try to focus on one issue or two issues.
So I do like the idea of the joint planning session. That'd be good.
I, I will suggest on, just on a side note, just be careful what you wish for, because there is a ton of paperwork that goes along with this.
And I can attest to that, because I'm on that commission, and it's hours and hours of reading, asking questions, talking to Ann. I know she's tired of my emails and voicemails, so it's, it's a lot of work. So Counselor Novak?
Yes, thank you. I think you, in this last comment, kind of put my heart at ease in that my request, my desire, my hope for next year with the five-year plan or whatever you next present to us, and again, let me just reiterate, I know that was a lot of work. Ninety-six pages is a ton of work. My request is, if there's a way, when you bring us information again, if we could boil it down to the main points, so that I'm, because I get overwhelmed with ninety-six pages on a given topic. If we could just, you know, bring me the main points, who applied, who they helped, how many, that really helps a lot. And I thank you for all the hard work and for your help in the future with that.
Thank you. Since it sounds like all testimony is complete, I'm gonna go ahead and close. Would you, any more, anything?
You haven't done any testimony yet.
Huh?
I don't think you've, you just responded to the staff report, so we still need to see if anyone is here to testify.
Is anybody, that's right, anybody here to testify regarding this topic? Anybody speak opposing this topic? Neutral? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing at seven oh one, June twenty-second. Would the counselor like having more discussion or make a motion? There's a resolution on page seven, I believe?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to adopt the resolution adopting the City of Albany's Twenty Twenty Two Action Plan for Community Development Block Grant Programs as required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
Second, is any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes? Okay. Next on the agenda is another public hearing. I'll open it up again at seven oh one, June twenty-second. It's the Planning Division Annual Fee Adjustments. Matthew Rutgers, Director Rutgers will be speaking to us on your page, your agenda sixty-seven through seventy. Directions for submitting, testimony is published in the agenda. I now declare the public hearing open at seven oh one. The staff report?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Counselors. So I, I will actually be pretty brief tonight. My memo's not very long. So it's, this is our annual planning fee rate adjustment. We adjust with CPIW, very similar to what Public Works had just brought to you several weeks ago. This is just our annual rate adjustment. Similarly to what you heard from Public Works, the CPIW represents about an eight point nine three percent increase over last year. So that's what we're recommending, that, that corresponding increase in planning division fees. So I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. There's a copy of the, the fee, a draft fee schedule on pages sixty-nine and seventy of your packet.
Counsel?
I just have one question. What was the raise last year?
Last year's raise, I think, was two point three percent.
Wow. Yeah, I just wonder, okay, since we've, it's been done this way all the time, do we actually need to go to the eight-point or whatever? That, that's a big increase. And I'm not sure. I just want to know what everyone else thinks on that.
Counselor Smith was next.
Eight point nine percent, nine-three percent, it does look big. Until I looked at the numbers and compared last year's fees to the fees that are proposed for the next year. It's a, it's as much as a couple hundred dollars on the big ones, and it's in the much lower range. It's like our stormwater fee, that seventeen percent sounds like the end of the world, but it's, it comes out to a quarter or something sometimes. This is a, we instituted these fees years ago because we were attempting to recover the cost of doing business. We don't, we don't work for free. Our staff does not work for free. We don't provide these services for the public who needs the help for free. And so in order to cover the cost of providing that service to the public, which is not paid for by taxes, we charge fees for individual acts of land use and planning. I don't like the numbers any more than anybody else does, but it seems to be sensible to stick with the way we've been doing it because we have a good business case for that.
Thank you. Any other counsel? Counselor Olson?
Yeah, I was thinking today, looking around at my, it's really an ancient house, eighteen eighty-eight. And it probably got built without, I'm, I'm sure there were architectural plans, but I don't think there was a city planning division that spent hours looking at everything. And it occurred to me to ask, how many people are supported by these fees in your department?
So the, the, the planning fees that we have here tonight are for people coming in and doing new development, new land use applications in the city. These are fees that are paid by the people actually doing the work. So it's not by the, the ratepayers. These are only people coming in to do business.
Okay. So when was the last time we actually kept track of how many hours were spent and how much our cost was incurred? I, and the reason I ask is, we have a, we have a demonstrated lack of housing in this city, well, in the state, countrywide, I think. And I'm wondering if there are buildings that could be used, if people felt they could afford to make them satisfactorily livable. And they're put off because they can't come up with the fees to do the work that they need to do. Now, I'm probably, I may well be wrong on this, but the thought occurred to me, so I thought I would ask a question.
Sure. And it, it's actually a great question, Counselor Olson, but I, I will note, based on that question, in our, in our planning fees, our land use application, planning fees, they are, they're highly subsidized by the general fund. So they're not, don't come anywhere near a, a true cost recovery. For a great example, to, to your point, for like Landmarks Commission's applications, we offer a flat fee on those. I think that they're going up to fifty-four dollars. So a, a good example of that would be the, one of the, the church that came in with the, the window issue, they paid fifty-some dollars for an application fee, and that include all of the staff time to process the application, prepare the staff report, conduct a public hearing with the Landmarks Commission for fifty-some dollars. So they're, they're highly subsidized.
Yeah, that, that does seem reasonable. But I do have a friend who is working on trying to get a building available for one of his kids to have a business, and it also has an apartment. And they, they just can't seem to get it over the hump. And I don't know if part of it was, is the, the cost of the fees, but I, I think back into the so-called good old days, and how much happened without all this, I guess you would call it help. But somehow, we've decided we need all this help. And anyway, the thought occurred to me. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilor have comment or questions for Director? Okay, so I can close the public hearing at seven oh nine? Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to do that again. Would anybody else like to comment on this topic? Would anybody else like to comment on this topic?
Sir?
Yes.
I, I just want to say that I think that councillor Olson does raise a valid point with regard to the fees, where Director Rutgers, you know, gave that example of, of the church getting an awful lot for their fifty-four-dollar, one fifty-four-dollar fee. I also know of instances where people do indeed, you know, they've come to me and told me about, well, I had to pay for this and this and this and this and this, and it can add up. It really can be prohibitive. And so while I appreciate that, yeah, the city does not work for free. People in the city do not work for free. I totally see that. I also, I'm always, probably everybody knows by now, loathe to raise fees of any kind for any reason. So I just want to say, I, if there's anything we can do to not raise fees every year, I would be all for that, if there's any way to not do that, if there's any way to simplify and make it so, as councillor Olson said, back in the day, maybe we got things done without so much assistance that cost so much extra. If there's anything that we could cut, if there's any, like, one step, and so there's only three instead of four, anything that could help make it easier to build a home, for instance, I would be all in favor of that. That's all I'm trying to say.
So, so I'll add a quick comment on this before we move on. I've been doing this for three years. I'm coming to the end of my fourth, my fourth year. The city staff gives away a lot of time, a lot of time. I know it's one specific case, they've probably given away four-hundred hours, three-hundred hours. So the fee, the fee adjustments are based on the environment right now. We need to pay for our services. We don't, it's not a profit generating exercise. We have to pay the cost that we have to pay. It's the cost of doing business. So I negotiated my contract from my office the other day, got an increase. That's the way it was. It was a tax write-off for me and we moved forward. And I know, of course, personal business or public, public is different than private, but it's still, the cost of doing business is going up in this country. So, yes, please.
Rich Kellum, the, the commercial.
Speak real close to the mic, sir.
Yeah, the microphone's very sensitive.
Rich Kellum, forty-eighty-five, the commercial.
Is the mic on?
I don't think so.
Oh, that makes it a little easier.
There you go.
I was wondering why people couldn't hear my voice. We did this to ourselves. There's no question that inflation, wholesale inflation went up by eleven-point-four percent. And you're asking for eight? I mean, you're going back by three as soon as this goes into effect. So it's not like it's an unreasonable number to go up. The only question is, to Dick's point, what is it that we really need to do? And that's the thing that we, as a people, always forget to ask ourselves before we say, we want to have that next rule. Because every rule that you folks make or that I made when I was here costs money.
Yep, I agree.
And if you make a new park, you got to take care of it. You have to worry about taking care of that. So, I mean, it's not an unreasonable number, it's just, the question is the wrong question. How many of those things do we need to, because you can no longer start a house and add to it. The rules will not allow that.
Right.
Without jumping in your lots of hoops. Anyway, that's all I had.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Kellum, excuse me. Okay, we had a staff report. Would the councillor like to make a motion? I think I closed it at 7:09. Did I close it at 7:09, correct?
I don't know if we ever got to it or not, since, since Mr. Kellum spoke, maybe we'll close it now. Maybe it'd be a good time to close it.
Thank you, I thought I closed it. So I now close the public hearing at 7:14 PM, June 22nd. Okay, would the councillor like to make a motion or additional discussion?
I would move that we adopt a resolution setting fees and charges for development code provisions and repealing resolu, resolution number sixty-nine ninety-six, a resolution setting fees and charges for development code provisions and repealing resolution number sixty-nine forty-seven.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say no? Motion passed, thank you. Next on the agenda is business, oh, excuse me, I'm gonna make a quick change because we have a person holding on. I'll go to item ten, we're gonna move to strategic plan update to now, and then we'll go to business from the public. So is she, is Sarah Singer on?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, Mayor and councillor.
Thank you. So this is, let me go back to my agenda item. Yeah, ten A, strategic plan updates with Sarah Singer-Wilson, yes.
Are we gonna have the consent agenda?
No, I'm moving this ahead, and then we're gonna go back to it.
Okay, but you're gonna come back?
Yeah, because you were paying her to stand and wait for us, so let's move her along. So go ahead, Sarah. Tell us who you are and why you're here.
Sarah Singer-Wilson with SSW Consulting to share an update on the strategic plan process. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen and take you through a quick update of where we've been on the strategic planning journey. All right, so a couple of things we'll highlight tonight is just a quick reorientation to the process that we've been undergoing here for the past few months, and then a recap of the council input from your work back in January and February. That helped to set the tone for some community engagement that has occurred over the last several months since then. And then what's next for updating the plan? So some, here that, just to reorient you, some of the goals that we set. So for this update of the plan, the update, just the purpose of it, provides an opportunity to check in with the council, with the community, and ensure that goals are aligning with community wants and needs. So we had the goal-setting session back in January, with some follow-up in February, and then we've got a process that's bringing all of these pieces into alignment. So from your strategic plan to your community survey, to your biennial budget process, so trying to bring all of these things into alignment. And then trying to build a cohesive and collaborative team in, through, throughout the course of that, as well as just providing some ongoing support for the process. So those were our goals that we set at the onset of this. So the plan alignment, you guys have seen this picture before, but every four years is intended to be the update of the strategic plan, the comprehensive update annually, checking in with the plan, because that will help to inform the department work plans. And then every two years, doing this council goal-setting, self-evaluation, the community survey also happens every two years to help inform the check-in of the plan, some outreach with the organization, and then that strategic plan check-in. And then all of that will feed into your budget process, which is highlighted in more detail here in this graphic, which, this is, again, just to recap, you've seen these things before, but here's where we are right now in June 2022, just debriefing the, we're gonna debrief the engagement results tonight, and all of this input is going to help to, we're now prepared to draft a plan, the strategic plan. So with that, as, hopefully you've received already the summary report from the council work that we did back in January and February, and so there's lots of detailed information from those conversations in that report. But just to reorient you to some of the themes that came out of that discussion, they were around smart growth, long-range planning, updates to infrastructure, fiscal sustainability, leveraging partnerships and building partnerships, how to improve engagement, civic pride, and then housing. So those were some of the themes that came out of the council conversations on this. From there, we took that input and thought about, worked with staff around doing some community engagement work and set some goals for that work, so making sure we discover and explore areas of alignment between the community and the council goals, and looking at programs and services, so where can we improve communication about services and Or identify if there's new programs or services needed, create some more opportunities for input, and just overall show, improve the public perception. So those were some of our goals. So staff took the information, all of the input, we helped them develop some questions, and then they conducted some of these engagement activities. So there was a survey that was out from April 4th through the 22nd. There were some community conversation that was held on May the 31st, and on June 4th, they were out at the farmer's market trying to gather input. And so through all of that, they, they engaged with about two-hundred-and-fifty people, and I believe there, you received a detailed report of, of some of those engagement results as well. But in summary, some of the things that we heard in those community engagement findings were very aligned with what we heard from the council earlier this year. And so first, one of the questions was, you know, what do people love about Albany? And thinking about, you know, how do we, how do we make sure the goals preserve what, what's important to people? And so hearing things such as, you know, we love the waterfront, the trails, the parks, the location, the community size, you know, people feel like it's accessible, they, they know one another, and yet they get to enjoy kind of some of the small-town feel while still having some of those bigger city amenities. They really appreciate community events, the downtown area, the history, and just overall the people. Also recognizing that there's some changes and trends happening in the community, so growth, you know, some issues around safety related to growth, homelessness is, is a trend that we're seeing in recent years, increasing homelessness, and then the revitalization of downtown. These changes and trends also correlate kind of directly to what we're hearing around, what are the most pressing challenges? So again, homelessness being one of those primary ones, infrastructure to keep pace with the growth that's happening, housing affordability and availability, community connections, safety issues. And so then people also offered up some solutions to consider, and just, this is, again, just a brief summary recap, but improving the infrastructure, gaining diversified industry and expanding business, better jobs or more jobs, controlled growth, and then maintaining the small-town feel. Again, some of these are, you know, people were, some of them are in almost direct contradiction to one another. It's hard, you know, we want to see diversified industry and expanding business and more jobs, but we also, you know, want to control that growth. And this, the tone of the, the community engagement findings really does mirror kind of what we talked about at the council level, when you all were reiterating how important it is to have smart growth and be thoughtful about the growth opportunities, because it really is important to folks to maintain that small-town feel. So what's next? We've now gathered all the input from the council, we've talked with the community, and now it's time to, to develop those updated goals. So you guys have a really good strategic plan framework in place, and so we want to, we want to maintain that and use that framework as we begin to update the goals and think about what are some of those objectives. So just kind of put a slide in here just to remind you of what that current framework entails, the mission of providing quality public services for a better Albany community. You've got a vision that includes these four themes of having great neighborhoods, a safe city, a healthy economy, and an effective government. And so in the summary report from the council work that we did, there were some lists under each of those four themes of some very specific ideas. And so the next piece is to work with staff and do some of the organizational outreach to craft those updated goals and, and some of the objectives, because staff will ultimately be the ones who are responsible for implementing the plan, and so we want to make sure that they have a chance to help craft the language around those objectives before it comes back to council for, for your review and adoption, and to make sure that, that they got it right. So crafting those objectives with all of the input that you provided in mind, as well as the input that was provided through the community. And so while you saw that community engagement snapshot, let's not forget that there were also some other engagement opportunities and the results of the community survey. So all of that can be factored in as staff begins to craft some of those objectives for achieving the goals. So conduct outreach, our next steps, conduct outreach with staff for reviewing the goals, craft those supporting objectives, and that will help to achieve the goals, and then draft the plan for council, community, and organizational review. And the goal is for that to come back to the council in July. Let's see, that concludes the pieces that I wanted to share. Mary, did I, anything that you wanted to add?
Mary's shaking her head no.
Okay, great.
That was great, Sarah, thank you.
Great. Councillor, Mayor, questions?
Councillor, questions? I'm seeing those all the way around. I'd like to thank you for your work. I'm looking forward to seeing the final, or at least the next step. I think the entire council's excited about getting the, the next portion done, and so I'm sure Peter will keep us in the loop of ours when we're gonna have our next meeting and get that out for us, so we can schedule time with you. Okay?
All right. Excellent. Thank you all, and we'll be sharing those results soon.
Thank you very much, Sarah, appreciate it, Ms. Singer. Next on the agenda is business from the public. Persons wanting to provide comments may submit written comments or register to speak at the city's website address on the agenda before noon, day of the meeting, or appear in person at the meeting and register to speak using the sign-up sheet. Thank you very much. Oh, wow, okay. We have, one, two, three, four, four people signed up to speak, or five, let's see, four. Let's see. We have one person that's, Allison, I thought there's a Mr. Verdon on here? Okay, so he's on my agenda, okay. So thank you, I'll start with Mr. Verdon. No one signed up to speak virtually. Mr. Mike Verdon of Albany signed up to speak in person. So set the timer for three minutes, please.
Thank you. Are you hearing us? Are we okay?
Microphone.
Yeah, I got it on, I think.
Well, you need to speak into it.
How's that?
That's better.
Okay, all right. Mike Verdon, Will Torbit, I'm a resident of Albany, 4349 Somerset Drive, Northeast, relatively new. I'm sensing and sitting here that we are, and I spoke with Peter regarding this yesterday, that this seems that we may be awkward in what we're bringing to you for your consideration, but I was told that this would be the appropriate way to do this. We are a commercial company called Catalyst Capital. We have a financial technology solution that I think could be very applicable to the City of Albany and for its community. And I asked Peter if we could have an hour and a half to two hours to speak, and of course he laughed me out of the building, but, and, and because I know Alex for the last forty years, I figured I could lean on him, and he just told me clearly, no, you have three minutes. So time is everything, and I'm trying to pick my words carefully. Our position, and the reason we're here today, is to plant a seed that hopefully would allow us to go to a next step and get directed to the appropriate party within your city agency. And what we have is a financial technology solution that's revolutionary. It comes in the form of this card, and there are, on top of the card benefit, another fifteen to twenty that we need the time to talk about. People want to talk about this card because this card offers a ten percent immediate cash back, instantaneously cash back on any purchase you may have. This is a debit card that we issue. There's no cost, there's no fees, it's simply a matter of signing up, doing a KYC, know your client, and you're issued a card, and you load money on it from your bank. This card produces a ten percent reward. Reason I'm bringing it here is, as a new resident, but being familiar from Salem and around, and being in this and around, and being in the sports activity, and contemplating that there perhaps could be an interest in developing a very prominent sports facility in this community, which I know will cost a lot of money, and listening to your debates tonight, money is certainly a topic. What I'm proposing is a consideration that would allow this card to help you finance, not finance, but provide the necessary underwriting financially to do some of the things like this particular idea I'm presenting to you. This is a mouthful, I know, it takes a lot of consideration. Ms. Singer just spoke, and we probably could be doing that with you folks for a long time. Three minutes is not enough. We came to throw an idea on the table and say we would appreciate your consideration to direct us to the right people that might take a hard look at us and see if this is really something that's viable and works, all right? And this is my chief marketing officer, this is my technology man, and if anybody has any questions, but I doubt if we're going to go deep with that. So I have to leave you with planting a seed. We think we have a good solution, it can be used for anything, it means perhaps every citizen in Albany. This is designed for individuals, for merchants, for agencies, and for charitable organizations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verdon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, would you like to hear more information, or have Peter, staff, look at this?
I'll be happy to serve as point of contact for Mr. Verdon.
Okay, so please provide Mr. Verdon with the point of contact, and thank you both for coming this evening.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, I have four other people that have signed up to speak. First, it would be Oscar and Tamelin Holt, here to provide an update for us, and their primary, so please do me a favor, I forgot to tell us the folks earlier, I don't put your address because of the world, I don't want your address out there. So just, you marked your prominent, your president of Oregon, that's Albany, that's enough. So tell us who you are and go for it. So three minutes, please.
I think your mic is off, forgive me.
Your mic, please.
Your mic is off.
How's that?
Better.
Oh, my goodness.
You got that voice.
We're here tonight to give you an update on the elevator that you, as the Albany Revitalization Agency, granted to the SE Young Building to help us put the basement and upper room back into useful service. The elevator's here, it arrived on our truck after a very long train ride from Pennsylvania. It arrived in the building on May 31st. The elevator technicians from Schindler Elevator Corporation are about four weeks from finishing the installation and testing, and it will then need to be inspected before we can call it done. Tamelin is going to hand out some information for you. The project has taken far longer than anyone could have expected. The original estimated time of completion was August 2021. There's been a long list of delays, starting with structural engineering, apparently this is a big bottleneck for local construction projects, as there is very little, very few companies in the area that can do the work. Other setbacks included finding that the historic elevator shaft was 18 inches too narrow, which necessitated moving the main riser pipe for the entire building's fire suppression system, pouring a footing for the back wall of the shaft, relocating plumbing vents, relocating the fire suppression system for the hood and kitchen, replacing the 20-plus-year-old fire alarm panel, and of course, the ever-present problems with the supply chain. Baldwin Construction has been great to work with and have stated that the project will be finished soon. However, there have been some cost overruns associated with the problems and delays encountered, as well as the current unexpected and unprecedented inflation. The total above the grant for those over, cost overruns comes to $66,074.44 that Baldwin will be needing reimbursed for. We appreciate the fact that the Albany Renewal Agency voted to make this elevator project an outright grant due to our having exhausted our borrowing power for the purchase of the building and the renovations necessary to get our business open in there. It is our hope that this body will find it possible to grant this additional amount, preserving your original decision to provide this elevator for the building without placing a burden upon our business. While $66,000 is a mere drop in the proverbial CARA budget, it is a huge amount to us and would certainly delay our ability to move forward with renovations of the basement and the upper room. We know that this is unexpected for you as it was for us, and we would greatly appreciate your consideration in this matter.
So thank you, and what I would ask is that you bring that back to the next ARA meeting, and then we'll take it under advisement, okay?
Thank you.
You submit this, this is our copy?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so then, when's the next ARA meeting, Counselor? July 16th? Is earlier, I think it was earlier, it was earlier than that. July 13th. So please submit this, or just sign up for that, for that meeting, okay? Because this body is separate from that body.
I understand that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you, Oscar, thank you, Tamelin. Next on the, would be Mr. Ray Hiltz, speaking for the Lions' Breakfast, Lions' Breakfast?
Yes.
But you are an optimist, though, right?
Yes.
Okay. Three minutes, please.
Oh, there it is, okay, 2:57. The last couple days, I've been walking around the village, asking, talking to people to find out, do you know who your counselor is, city counselor? I talked to 26 people in the last couple days, two, not including me, knew who the counselors were in Ward 3. Now maybe in Ward 2 and Ward 1, maybe that same stat. Have you, as counselors, gone out and talked with people? I know Mayor Alex, you have held a coffee time with some of the constituents. So anyway, think about it, because if only two people know. So what I'm now here for is to invite you to come and volunteer at our East Albany Lions' Breakfast. We plan on serving 5,000 breakfasts over the four days. Our time is from 6:00 to 11:00, and I know you don't have to be there quite so early, but if you want to wear your badge saying that you're Ward 3, or Ward 1, or Ward 2, you can do that. However, our rules say you can't campaign, but you can, if they ask you a question, you can answer it. And so if you got there in one of the days, or all four days, be greatly appreciated, and you can come maybe like at 9:00 or 2:11, or whatever is you have time for. So anyway, thanks for listening to me, and I hope to see you at breakfast. And I don't know, I think you, if you volunteer, I think you can accept a free breakfast, because as volunteers, and anyone in the audience back here, we could use your help too. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have been invited by four people, and I'm going two days.
Thank you.
Could you tell us where it is and when?
Yeah, where and when, please?
Where?
Where and when is the breakfast?
Where is the breakfast?
Yeah, where and, so where and when?
Oh, it's $10 for the breakfast per individual, $5 for kids under 12, and it's out at the...
Timberland?
Timberland, out at Timberland.
And what days again?
What dates?
What date?
Oh, July 1 through 4.
Okay, thank you.
6 to 11.
It used to be the Timber Carnival Breakfast, it used to be at Eleanor Hackelman Park?
Yes, we continued on and moved out, out to the park out there. Much better facilities, and because I know the weather's going to be in the 70s in the afternoon, so probably 60s in the, while you're there. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Allowing me to go over a little bit.
Oh, no, we had questions.
And Ray, I like the sentiment on your T-shirt.
You like, you like my T-shirt?
Your T-shirt you're wearing.
You're welcome.
So thank you, Ray, Mr. Hiltz. The next on the agenda is Albany Downtown Association Executive Director Lisa Grotto.
Thank you, Mary Johnson, Mayor Johnson and City Council. As you said, my name is Lisa Grotto, and I'm the Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association, and I just wanted to invite everyone this Saturday to join us for the summer downtown cleanup. We'll be starting at 9:00 AM, and we'll go till about noon, and there will be treats there and water for anyone who would like to come help us. So if you'd like to RSVP, you can call our office, text me, get us on Facebook, or whatever works for you.
So where would you like, where would you like people to meet up?
We would like you to meet at our office, which is 126 Ferry Street Southwest, between First and Second Avenue, and then we'll be planning to work on the areas on First Avenue primarily, and we'll see how many people come and where we expand from there. So thank you again, this Saturday, 9 to 12.
Thank you very much. Hope to see you down there, I plan to make the Pride event and also go down there to the Downtown Association, I'll just walk over, but I'd love to see everyone out there. Mr. Cordier, Tom Cordier is next to speak with us. Money Streets is the topic? It says Money Streets on here. You wrote Money Streets?
Yeah, you wanted the subject, so I gave you a subject.
Three minutes, please.
Tom Cordier, live in Albany, North Albany, actually. I don't know the algorithm that the city uses to decide which streets get repaired when. I don't know the algorithm. But in my area, in North Albany, I walk very frequently North Albany Road, Broadway, Violet, Violet's a long street, 21st and 22nd, and I have yet to meet one person that believes that the slurry coating of those streets that's going on right now is a wise use of money. So that, whatever the algorithm is, doesn't bring the right outcome, in my view, and the people that I live near agree with me. I don't know how many of you look at Hasso Herring's blog, because the quality of Albany's streets has been a, an issue in this community for years. And when I watch him ride around our community and look at the streets, and look at the disrepair that we have, of not just those videos, but of my own walking around and my own driving around, the last damn street that needs that kind of help does not, is not Albany, where I live, in North Albany. To me, it's an absolute waste of money. Those streets, I moved there when those streets were put in for the first time, and they have not depreciated in a way that would require the slurry coating that is being put on now. So I have 23 seconds to address another issue. I heard somebody here to say that, well, we need to trust the experts. I don't trust the experts, experts to me is a four-letter word anymore, and by God, if we haven't learned anything in this COVID time to not trust the experts, we haven't learned anything.
No, keep going, that's another topic, go ahead, you have three more minutes.
I'm done.
Okay.
I'm done. Yeah, but I do appreciate Ms. Novak's comments earlier, and to trust just that it's, oh, that's what we're going to do, the details are there, and to have a committee of volunteers that doesn't understand what kind of presentation to make, so that those kind of questions, the answers to those kind of questions are right up front, you need a new group of volunteers.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Mr. Cordier. And next, that's the last speaker from Business from the Public. Next on the agenda, is, go ahead, please, Counselor Smith?
This relates to Business from the Public, I just wanted to make sure that we follow up with the Hults and let them know that the ARA meeting is July 20th.
July 20th.
That's the third Wednesday.
They've already left.
We have a council meeting on the 13th.
We need to get to them. So can we make sure that they get that information? Thank you. Second reading, number seven on the agenda, second reading of an ordinance, Justin Gross, annexation request, AN-01-22, and ZC, or Zebra Charlie 01-22, declaration of annexation, and Sean Kidd.
An ordinance proclaiming annexation of property identified on Lynn County Assessor's map, number 11S-03W-29, as tax slot 501, and amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany zoning map, by amending the Albany zoning map and adopting findings of fact and conclusions.
Would a counselor like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Item B of the same, the same position, or excuse me, item eight, would be first reading of an ordinance, Justin Gross, annexation request, Alpha November 01-22, and Zebra Charlie 01-22, removal from the Rural Fire Protection District, Sean Kidd. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's map, 11S-03W-29, as tax slot 501, from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Would a counselor like to make a motion to read this ordinance in title only a second time?
I move that the ordinance should read a second time.
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, thank you very much, those opposed say no. Motion passes.
An ordinance withdrawing territory identified on Lynn County Assessor's map, 11S-03W-29, as tax slot 501, from the Albany Rural Fire Protection District.
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes. Next on the agenda item, thank you, counselors, and thank you, city attorney, is the adoption of the consent calendar?
Oh, yes, I'd like to hear something about item B2, about the Arts Commission application for a grant.
Is there, is anybody from the Arts Commission here to speak on that topic? Oh, there she is. Hi, Director Dain.
Like, I have a comment about item, item 9A.
So 9A, so...
9A.
A.
Oh, A1.
A1 and B2. So let's go with Counselor Olson's first, and then we'll go with Counselor Shapkinsky. Counselor, Director, go ahead.
Thank you so much for the opportunity, and I believe online should be our Chair Keith Locey and Vice Chair Joanne Zimmer, Joanne's been the lead kind of on this project. And so our Arts Commission, we know this is a little bit non-traditional, as I, well, in the years that I've been here, we have not applied or asked to apply for a grant on behalf of the city. And so we've had several new commissioners come on, and when they came on, they said, great, we're really excited, we can't wait to help invest in public... And when they came on, they said, great, we're really excited. We can't wait to help invest in public art. And unfortunately, we don't have a budget set aside specifically for public art outside of the Percent for Art program. So they have taken it upon themselves, and Joanne has done a lot of research and has found a grant through the Oregon Cultural Coalition, oh, sorry, Oregon.
Arts Commission.
Arts Commission. Thank you, sorry. Thank you, that we can actually apply for as a municipality instead of a 501(c)(3). And so I can let Joanne talk about it a little bit more to help answer questions, but at this point, we haven't applied for the grant. It's under the traditional limit that we would have to come to council. But because this is out of the ordinary, we wanted to make sure that council felt comfortable with a commission going out and seeking resources for our project. So, Joanne, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I believe Kim sent a memo in talking about the basics of the funding opportunity. Mayor Johnson actually suggested at one point, we had a conversation about, wouldn't it be cool if we did a mural that kind of incorporated the variety of skin tones that live within Albany's borders? And so playing on that a little bit, we were also talking about graffiti and remediation of graffiti. So I went on a search for funds to do that kind of a thing. And through one of our Community Development Commissioners and Albany citizens' suggestion, I did check with Business Oregon and the Oregon Arts Commission. And they have an Arts Builds Communities Grant that is an annual thing. Roughly deadline in October where municipalities and 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations can apply for funds for art that's impactful in the community and addresses emergent needs of the community, diversity, business, community, whatever ultimately is decided. And so we talked about it a little bit, talked with Kim about it, and decided that a reasonable budget to consider would be about $10,000. And it's 100% match required, so donations of folks' time, paint to match samples with our community members, all types of things. The overall budget would end up being $20,000 of the grant. And the $10,000 request that we would make under this application would also include a de minimis rate of administrative fee, which we would pass on to Kim's department for actually signing and administering the grant overall. At this point, we don't have a solid deadline when the grant is due. I'm working off of last year's paperwork and conversation with the grant coordinator for the Oregon Arts Commission. But we're targeting October 1 and just kind of getting through answering questions in the expired grant application to get us started. And if y'all give us your approval to go forward on this application, then we will begin working in earnest to be able to submit when the grant opportunity is actually opened, officially opened, and there is a deadline. And so if it follows, like last year, October 1-ish, funds would be awarded sometime between the end of October and January. And then funds would be immediately available for us to begin our project in February, probably, February or March. And so we'd really be looking at seeking out the artists or artists to work with us, and they would be paid out of this. We don't have an exact amount yet, but it would be a percentage of the grant. They would be paid. Location, obviously, we want a mural that's, you know, downtown. We're hoping somewhere around the Carousel to, you know, take advantage of everything that goes on downtown. And be able to converse with the community and get folks involved in a larger way and helping us design what this mural would look like. But at the end of the day, one of the primary pieces of the mural, we're calling it a unity mural, is because we do want to enlist community members' help in having their skin tone actually matched with paint. And then the artist, among the other colors they use for whatever mural design is decided, would be the skin tone colors of the folks that participate in this opportunity. And we're just really excited about it and think it would be a really great opportunity to highlight more of what's going on in Albany's great downtown. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Thank you. It sounds like a great idea.
Thank you.
How about Lilywhite Vikings? Are you gonna show her her skin tone?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, everybody.
All of, anybody. That's what our hope is, you know, because if we could get, since we have to match $10,000, if we could get 1,000 Albany residents to get their skin tone matched on a little paint can about this big, we'd have about half of that $10,000 match just in participation. So it would be really awesome.
Doesn't sound like anybody can get tied in a knot about that. Sounds like a good idea to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Commissioner Zimmer. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Director.
No problem.
Counselor Novak?
Thank you. I have a question. I wasn't sure from reading about this whether these monies covered just the artist and the materials and the design, or if that also includes the installation?
So I can answer part, well, can I answer part of that?
Oh, certainly.
So one of the things that, the reason I brought the idea to the Arts Commission, shared with Julie Jackson, is because when we're going through the George Floyd period in Albany, I saw a comedian on Drybar Comedy, and he talked about how he felt about being called black. He says, I'm brown. So he went home, this is funny, he went home, back to Los Angeles from Enid, Oklahoma, and he went to a paint store, and he looked at the paint chips, and the color that he ended up being was chocolate indulgence. I'm not joking. It's funny as all get out. Well, anyway, after my car was vandalized and my flag was thrown on my ground at my house, I was doing a project at home, and I'm still working on the project. But I was at Lowe's, and I was doing the same thing. And the young lady that worked at Lowe's, she, I used to umpire her softball games when she was in high school. And so she saw me doing that. She said, Mr. Johnson, what the heck are you doing? And I told her the story, and so she said, come here. And so I sanitized my hands, and she took my hand, and she scanned it. And the 30 million colors, oh, the 30 million colors in Lowe's database, I wasn't in it. So I have my custom color and my little vial at my office. But I posted it on Facebook. Forty-three people bought their skin tone the next week. So it was only $3, but that's where the idea came from, is that a mural, because I'm labeled as black, but I'm not black. I'm a brown man, right?
Did they give you a name for you?
No, it's Alexander. That's me. You know, and I have it in my office. It's my actual skin color.
I've seen it.
Yeah, and she's actually seen it.
I understand that. I just, I'm asking because you said the other gentleman, his color was called chocolate indulgence.
He chose the standard point chip.
Okay, so your color is called Alex Johnson III?
Alexander, that's me.
Thank you.
So anyway, I thought it was a great idea, and so I talked to Lowe's and I talked to a couple of other paint places. And they said that if you do this, to put our name on it, we'll prep the wall, provide the paint for the base. And so I always work that angle, so. Nobody's committed, and so, because I haven't been back to them to talk about it, but I will engage in conversations with those businesses to find out if they're willing to donate that time and resources.
Yes, and we'll definitely have to follow up. If y'all give us permission to go forward on this, then, you know, we'll have work to do in order to even submit the grant in the first place, so.
May I ask, can I get an answer to my question?
What's that?
My question was whether the monies cover for the artist or if it includes the installation or not. I didn't hear an answer.
So we're leveraging partnerships.
Yeah, to be perfectly honest, we haven't gotten into all of those weeds yet, but it's going to be as inclusive as possible, and $10,000, we figured, is going to give us enough to accomplish what we need to do.
The goal is for the, I apologize, the goal is for the grand amount to accomplish the whole project, from creation, hiring the artist, obtaining the materials, installation. Because as you all know, we don't really have funds hanging out elsewhere. And so if we don't get the full amount, then this project would be scaled accordingly, so that we're still able to make something happen, but we're working within our means.
And where will it be installed?
We don't know yet, Commissioner. That's part of the fact finding we're doing right now. We're hoping downtown somewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, and thank you much, Director. Next, Counselor Kapczynski was 9A.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure that when we pass this, that we send a letter, a thank you letter for service.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. They.
That's all I had.
Yeah, I got that. Yeah, done.
Well, now, he's being appointed, isn't he?
Oh, but for the previous person to write it. So I send a letter to everyone that's on the Board of Commissioners that leaves. Okay, would a counselor make a motion? Like to make a motion?
I move we adopt the consent calendar as written.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Counselor, I thank you for the discussion on that consent calendar. Next on the agenda is Public Works Construction Supervisor Position, Director Bailey. On your page 92 of your packet. She's still here? Also, so are you gonna speak for her today? Okay. Stacy Buck Castro?
Good evening, Mayor and counselors. So this item in front of you, the memo is outlining our request that council by motion approve the reclassification of a full-time position in the Public Works Engineering Department. This position is the Lead Engineering Technician, and we're requesting that the position be reclassified to an Engineering Construction Supervisor. This reclassification will not change the number of employees in our department, but it will result in an increase to the Public Works Engineering Services Fund that's going to equal approximately $375 a month and about 4.4,000 annually. Just to share a little bit about this work group, the Engineering Technician Work Group, it consists of five employees, four technicians, and then the lead. They provide all the project management and inspection of the projects that are constructed by the city or through private development. This group also manages a number of programs, including the Sewer Lateral Replacement Program and the Erosion Prevention Sediment Control Program, which is in place to manage construction site runoff. This is the group that we go to when there's an emergency repair that needs to be taken care of. They issue permits for work that take place in the right of way, and they provide customer service. We have been considering making this change for quite a while now, and it's just timely to do so now. It's going to allow the group to function even more effectively and provides flexibility that we'll be able to expand the duties and responsibilities that we can't right now with the lead.
Counsel, any questions for Stacy Buck Castro, please?
I do have a question. I noted that it said that this, the Lead Engineering Technician could coordinate day-to-day operations but not provide direct supervision or complete the performance review, and I'm just curious as if there was someone who has been providing direct supervision and completing performance reviews? Or that, so those things haven't been happening in the absence of a lead?
They have been. So this work group currently works under my supervision. What this will be removing is sort of a layer. So I work with the lead, who then works with the technicians, and it would be elevating the lead so that they could provide direct supervision.
Okay, and I do appreciate that, but I just want to tie this into what we were talking about earlier, and former Counselor Kellum kind of referred to the fact that every decision we make here, as was pointed out earlier, the city doesn't work for free. So every time we exchange this person for that person, or we raise hours or rates or whatever, then it comes back in, or it potentially comes back, if not actually comes back, in having to raise fees for things so that we can continue to pay for staff to do what, I don't know, is there any? I just, I feel a little bit like I'm chasing my tail. I don't want to say, you know, you can't have the person that you need do the work you need to do, and in the vast eternal scheme of things, a little over $4,000 isn't maybe that huge. All I'm wanting to bring attention to, to all of you, my fellow laborers in this field, is these things cost, these people cost, and I just can't get out of my head the fact that personnel costs are the number-one driver of fees and rates and increases. So, you know, I'm not saying no. I'm just saying, let's just take a moment and consider the fact that when we do these things, it, down the road, will cost us more in having to raise fees and that sort of thing. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith had something?
Yes, I'd just like to say that, as I referenced relying on experts before, this, these people in this position, and the folks in engineering, the folks in planning who issue permits and do building inspections are experts at what they do, and the things that they're doing that cost money to perform are things that keep the rest of the community safe. They make sure that buildings are safe, that infrastructure is constructed properly. That's what they do. That's why they're there. They're making sure that all the safety regulations are followed, and I don't, that's all I'm going to say about that.
Any other counsel have anything? Any questions for Stacy Buck Castro? Counselor Olson?
I guess I could ask, are we getting the employment chart back to the way it used to be? Or is this a new change in our staffing chart?
That's a good question. This model is actually going back to a model that was in place about 15 years ago, where we had a construction supervisor manager. And it was just really effective to have a lead that could provide supervision and performance reviews with this work group. So it is consistent with the model that we've had. It was about 15 years ago, though.
And I think I recall that workloads rise and fall in the Engineering Department. And are we at, going toward a higher rate of work now than we have been?
Work has not slowed down, so it's definitely has, I can't say that it's more or less, but, well, it's definitely not less.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would a counselor like to make a motion?
I would move to upgrade the position as requested.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Would anybody like to take a five-minute break for a biological break?
Yes.
Okay, let's take five minutes, be back here at 8:13.
Are we gonna take a break before the exec?
Are we going to take a break before the exec?
Our standard agenda, Item C, Senate Bill five five six one, allocation discussion. And Ann Catlin is going to bring that to us. And then after that, we'll talk about new addition, Item D, which is the purchase of equipment. And then we'll get on for the business of the council. So are we recording? Ann, it's your floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I have to say, can you hear me okay?
Go ahead, Stacey. Ms. Counselor.
I need to recuse myself for this part of the discussion.
Thank you very much.
So I have to thank Counselor Johnson for bringing this up at your last council meeting, which is why we are here today. But you may remember back in March, we came to you getting, requesting some input on how to go about distributing the one million dollars the city received from the state to address homelessness, housing insecurity, and affordable housing. And we recommend, we solicit requests for funds and go through an application process. And the mayor recommended the Community Development Commission be the body that reviews these applications, since they are familiar with this kind of stuff with their community development block grant work. And so, but we did promise to come back to you, and that's the part that I forgot, and I do appreciate you reminding us. So today, it is our chance to come back to you and give you an update on a proposed process. And Beth Freeland is going to share a screen, but I did do the old-fashioned copies of paper and provided you with a sheet that summarizes a proposed process that we're partway in. And then the Community Development Commission just met on Monday and talked more about this, and I wanted to share their thoughts with you. But I do want to get your feedback on process and then, as well as evaluation criteria and priorities tonight. So regarding the process, we thought to move things along, we would do a two-phase process where the first phase would be a simple request for funds so that agencies or developers didn't have to spend hours of time preparing an application, but just trying to cast a net to see if there were any projects out there interested in receiving funds. And we did that, and the information that we sent out and the form is in your packet. And we got eight applications. We're kind of surprised. And totaling three point five million dollars, and I know that sounds awful because they're only a million dollars, but I, we didn't want to limit the amount because we really wanted to see what the needs are out there in case the state is wanting to provide more funds to cities like ours to continue to address needs. And we've already reported our sort of semi-success to the league about that. So the CDC spent a lot of time on Monday trying to figure out how to make, how to evaluate the applications and what would we want to see in an application for Phase Two. And before doing that, we wanted to check in with you, and I wanted to share with you some of their ideas on different things that we can ask for and evaluate in the application. And that is sort of the second part of what I have on the sheet here for you. So in general, and in summary, their conversation was a lot very good. It's challenging because there is a variety of needs across that full housing spectrum. We received applications regarding homelessness and homeownership. And we know that homelessness is a big issue for us in many communities, but, and especially for certain populations, those with addiction, sex offenders, those with mental health issues. But if we don't have housing units that people can move into and get out of shelter, we, you know, we have an issue. So there's a need for all of the housing, and the commission felt that new housing units were equally important as also trying to help address homelessness. So that means, well, how do we prioritize these applications? And what they wanted to do is invite all of the applicants to submit in Phase Two, provide more detailed information, and this is where they would start evaluating some of the details, looking at feasibility and the financials. So back to process, I did want to say that we do want to know if you like this process, that we go through this more detailed round of applications, and then you could just be the ones that look at those and hear presentations from those applicants. Or the way we have it set up is the Community Development Commission would do a first review of those and make recommendations, but you could still see all the applications, hear presentations from the applicants, and make that final decision. And you can then have comments from the Community Development Commission and decide whether or not you want to consider those. So that's our proposed process. I guess before I talk about some of the items and evaluation criteria and needs, I could just get feedback on the process.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Yes, this is kind of reminds me back in the day when I was on several of the allocations committees with United Way. We always had more requests coming in than we had funding, and we had to analyze them in a group session when they approached us one at a time. You know, trying to justify their, why their idea was better than somebody else's. But I guess the question is, are, is there going to be any methodology that you folks might use to test whether or not there's duplication of services from some of the agencies that would, or would be applying for funding? Because if there's, that was one of the things, the criteria that I recall was we didn't want to have a duplication of services because it was just double spending on the same issue when you could get more bang for the buck if you could concentrate it. That's just my only question and comment.
Yeah, that's a good question. Most of the applicants weren't proposing services. They're proposing units or beds. So, but when I walk through some of the suggested evaluation criteria, I think we might get to that in one way or another. Any other comments about?
So I'll make a comment. So one of the things we looked at was percentage to complete the project. Some are over fifty, some are twelve percent. So we looked at that number because if you're a hundred dollars, it changes their discussion, your discussion. But if it's only twelve percent of your budget, then it's more, we can help more businesses. We can help more organizations build beds or provide housing. So that's part of what we'd like to add as well is percentage of a total amount of project. Because if you're a hundred percent reliant upon this money, can you actually complete the project? That means there's no other income streams to that particular nonprofit. So we had some lengthy discussion, two hours of discussion about it.
Yeah, I could walk through some of the suggested scoring evaluation criteria, and it's sort of fallen into two different categories, the feasibility, you know, the financing, ability to complete the project, and then really the needs and demonstrating the need and providing, you know, who are you serving, how many units? So one of the issues the Community Development Commission talked about and would like your input on is whether to set a maximum grant amount. And there was some discussion about that because, you know, there's a desire to serve, to help more than one project, right, or help more than one housing type in that housing spectrum. And then there's also a desire to ensure that you're providing enough money for that project to be successful. So the Community Development Commission talked about, well, would three hundred thousand dollars be a good maximum? And after thinking about it a little bit more and some other comments from other commissioners, there was some hesitancy in setting that limit, but something for you to think about when I'm walking through this. So we have one million dollars. One of the suggestions is to require a fifty percent match, and most of the applicants actually are leveraging other funds. A couple of them, the way their applications were structured, maybe didn't have a fifty percent match. So you might consider whether we require a twenty-five or a fifty percent match. But, you know, with the applicants that came forward, most of them are providing a match, but not all of them are providing a fifty percent match. Then we would look at readiness to proceed. So this has sort of got two sides. We want projects that'll get done right away, right, twelve months to eighteen months. There was some urgency. The word urgency was in the Senate Bill five five six one. However, some projects that may take longer, such as new construction, acquiring land, construction, may have, you know, a longer timeframe. However, they may be serving a bigger need within the community or have a greater impact in the community. So it's hard to know without seeing the details and hearing presentations, I think. But that's something to consider, whether to have a maximum grant amount. And then the readiness to proceed, you know, do you want to try to just fund those that'll be done within twelve months, for example? But that is a consideration. Then the ratio of grant to leveraged funds, I think the mayor just mentioned that. We would look at, of course, those that are leveraging more money and bringing more money into the community would score higher. Your return on investment, so we'd be looking at the cost, you know, how much in grant funds would be awarded? And how many units or beds would we get out of that? How many people are they serving? So then demonstrating that financial gap without requiring detailed financials in the first round, we weren't really able to assess the demonstrated gap in that financial need. And then it's really important that these projects actually get completed. So agency or the developer capacity and track record, we thought was important. And then the source and certainty of leveraged funds. Some of the applicants need to apply to the state for some funding, and it's could be very competitive, and some applicants may have a great track record or not. So we don't want to put money towards a project that maybe won't move forward if they don't receive their leveraged funds. And then because there are actually two applications around homeownership housing, there were, there were some questions around how that would work and long-term affordability. Do homeowners earn equity? But then getting down to the needs evaluation, again, where we could use your input, I think our main goal is supporting projects that add capacity to our housing stock, and that is in units or in beds in the shelter or in a supportive housing or transitional house. And then the types of projects that serve our most underserved population or those that have housing insecurities or are hard to house. Those can include really a wide range of people, that people with extremely low incomes, which would maybe be below fifty percent. We have people with mental health issues or with backgrounds that make it very challenging for them to get into housing. And then we have a minority population who is underrepresented in our homeownership, and low-income minorities, people with disabilities, et cetera. And then really making sure that the applicants demonstrate the need for the proposed project so that they provide all of the data and information like they do for these community development block grant funds. Just needed to show the demonstrated need within the community and their ability to complete the project within the timeline they propose. So that's kind of, those are the areas that we want to include in the application, but we do want to take this time to let you know that now is a great time to make changes, or if you want to set priorities around a certain issue or a certain type of housing, that's fine. The Community Development Commission welcomes your input. And if you want to just bypass them and do this, that's fine, too. So we just want to get your direction so we can move forward and continue the application process.
Counsel discussion. Thank you, Ann. Counselor Johnson?
Thanks, Ann. I appreciate you bringing that back. I guess my question is, okay, a million dollars can be gone in a minute. New construction, I mean, are, you say you do have applications, are they new construction? Are the shelters looking to expand their beds or? And then it says, you know, I'm looking here, well, if we help somebody get into housing, then they have to stay there for so long to sell, so. I don't know.
So I can just tell you, I can give you a brief overview of who's applied, and we would just invite those same people to apply again. So we had an application from Habitat for Humanity for helping construct new homes. We had an application from Dev Northwest. They are looking at securing a property and leveraging a bunch of money to build actually now fifteen to thirty-five homes, looking like more homes for homeownership. Helping Hands applied to help finish the construction portion of their shelter expansion, and also money for the fire sprinklers for the women's shelter so that they could increase the number of beds from ten to fourteen. The Helping Hands, it would be to improve the parking area, but you first have to vacate the street. So, I mean, any decisions would have to be after a land use decision. Jackson Street, you shelter, applied for money for a project that's already completed, and that wouldn't be eligible, but we can have them apply for, if they are interested in submitting a Phase Two application for operating expenses. I mean, you can use the funds to provide services, but unfortunately, they just finished a shelter expansion, and we really can't use the money to reimburse, you know, debt, so. They understand that. Creating Housing Coalition applied for funding to help with their tiny home village. Creating Housing Coalition applied for funding to help with their tiny home village. Albany Partnership applied for funding to purchase a home to be, for people with mental illness. They have a partnership right now with the county and with the Limbent Housing Authority. And they were hoping to just to have another house for that. And a private Realtor developer person applied to add some, or convert some units from basically a studio to two-bedroom units and expanding into some attic space. And that was one of our private people. And then there is a private company looking to build homes in North Albany, like 180 affordable rental units in North Albany. And they also applied for funding and they are also in this, applying for state funding. So. You have a really, like a huge spectrum. So you have some projects that are sort of in works. And then you have some that will take a little bit more time, but may bring types of units that we haven't seen in Albany. So it was really challenging for the commission to go, hmm, this looks better than that. Could we put a million dollars towards homelessness? Well, I don't think so. I mean, I wish I could say we could, but I think that's a whole separate conversation. And how would that a million dollars be used and really making sure that it was, how could we use that? So.
So first question is, what do they consider of affordable apartments?
So in this situation, for the rental apartments, they're applying for funds that require those to be affordable at persons at 60% or below median income. But that would be the Benton County income in North Albany. But, I mean, that's a low income. I mean, right now, you know, rents have just gone up substantially. It's actually cheaper to be a homeowner, you know, if you bought your home just two years ago than to be a renter today. So.
And then the other question is, can it go, it can go toward mental illness also, correct? To help those who are mentally ill get off the streets or do something? To me, that's.
Yeah, so actually in talking with the shelters, there's a really big need for what we would call supportive housing or transitional housing because there are clients that need more services than the shelters can provide. And the shelters have sort of become more than emergency, they're becoming interim and transitional shelter because of the lack of places to move people into with adequate services. So, yeah.
Counselor Novak, Counselor Smith afterwards.
Thank you. I need a little clarification and I apologize. I did not hear some of your words when you, no, it's not your fault. I just, I missed part of a phrase when you were talking about Helping Hands and you said something about the street. I'm like, I don't know what you said. Would you, do you recall?
Yep.
I didn't want to interrupt you because you had a list of things to reel off, so I didn't interrupt, but I, I have no idea what you said.
I'm sorry. So several months ago, we approached you to see if council was interested in vacating the street adjacent to Helping Hands Shelter because they could use parking to help accommodate some of the cars from people that stay at the shelter. And so staff is initiating that vacation and that would be where a future parking lot might be if that street vacation is approved.
We've approved it.
So they would use the funds, they requested funding to complete the street vacation, to complete the parking lot in the street vacation. But you could look at it as really helping them finish their 30-bed expansion. So they're currently doing a 30-bed expansion. They have most of the funds for that. They received a grant from the state. And that will be a low-barrier shelter, but they, they need some parking to help with that project. The way, there's some laws changing around parking, but all that to say, they need the parking. There are cars on the street and we've had complaints about it, you know. And so if the street is vacated, they would use these funds to improve the parking lot so that then they can occupy their expansion, get their occupancy permit.
Do you know how many beds they currently have?
Yeah, I think they have 104 or something like that. And they would be adding 30. So these would be for people who are not willing to take a drug test. So it would actually get some of the people off the streets and out of the camps possibly in a warm place. Because I think some, well, we know that some people refuse to stay in the shelter if they have to take a, do a urine test.
Any other counselors have anything? Counselor Smith?
I was thrilled when I found, I use the word thrill too often, but I'm easily entertained, I guess. I was really excited that we got a million dollars for Albany. I saw the other cities on the list and I thought, well, shoot, I wish we could have that, but we did. I, I have a pie in the sky idea for this and I, I want to see that money make as big, as big an impact as possible. It's not much, but if it's matched with other people, with private funds that you say the applicants are, are coming up with, we could have a pretty, pretty good impact, demonstrable impact is what I'm looking at in a variety of housing types to serve a variety of populations. And I would love to see Albany's name on a list somewhere that says, look what they did with this money. We could do the same thing here.
Our goal, our goal is that. Yeah.
So where we could get a little input is if you have any thoughts about setting a maximum amount. I mean, I think we'd like to fund at least two projects, but I don't know. I mean, that's kind of the sense that we might fund one end of the spectrum or another, or two ends of the spectrum.
Or even three.
It would be helpful so that when we actually solicit the application, applications, that we, if we're going to have a maximum, that we include it in there. And then if you want to have a minimum percent match.
Can we send them, send the council the score sheet that we use to evaluate the applications?
Well, so we came up with a, some scoring criteria for, for just this very basic application that we received. And we ended up, a lot of commissioners, it was a holiday, hadn't scored their applications. But what I've got here on the list would be things that we would assign points to. And we'd have a long spreadsheet where you might evaluate and award points for the different categories here. And we want to make sure that your priorities and suggestions are reflected in those evaluation criteria and points. So that, and I'll have to say, the applications provide that documentation maybe of financials, but hearing presentations from the agencies is actually, I think, really makes a difference in helping you understand what their goal is and what they might be able to do for the community. So I'd strongly recommend that we require them to present to you, to council.
Okay, if you're just looking for some numbers right off the top of my head, I can see three, one at $500,000. If, if that would leverage a matching $500,000, one at 300 and one at 200. And then depending upon the qual, because I, I think if you have a large amount as an opening salvo, that could leverage a more powerful result rather than just trying to knock it down to say four of them at 250 or something like that. So I could see easily seeing one at 500 and seeing what happens.
Yeah, I think if we set a maximum and also have a minimum grant match, that it may, some of the applicants may reevaluate their proposal and whether they're going to apply. So I think that we will, just doing a few things, we'll probably see slightly different proposals and maybe fewer. And it will make it easier.
But they might, they might be better proposals if they're, yeah.
Exactly. But I guess to, I think what we do is just set a maximum amount, maybe 500,000. I mean, we didn't have very many that were over 500,000, just so you know. I mean, most of them were under. So we did have some that were over, but it's because they're trying to do a lot. So, you know, there's that concern if we, if we put a limit, will, will the ones that actually might bring in a big project walk? I don't know. Or will the project not happen? So your thoughts on that would be, would be great.
I like your idea.
And so I, I'm looking forward to you guys seeing that information. There's some pretty good projects that are, were offered to us, so I'm looking forward to that discussion.
Yeah.
So this is just, we're not voting tonight, we're just providing input. So would you like it to come via email or how would you like that input?
Well, if you have thoughts, I want, I'm working on the application right now. We want to get it out.
Because a lot of my stuff's already on here.
Give time for applicants to submit their application. And we may slow down the process, but over the next couple of months. And then it sounds like, or we'll ask, would you like them to present to the council? And I have a feeling we would have all the applicants present to you, but the Community Development Commission may provide their recommendations, but you would make the final decision. So just trying to make sure we're going to follow a process that, that you would like to see.
Yeah, I think that sounds good. And I just want to get, like Counselor Smith, I want to get the best bang for our buck. That's the thing. I don't want to, you know.
I think that's how we feel as well.
Yeah. Yeah. So return on investment and I mean, more leveraged funds, the better. And then if you're asking for a lot, you should be doing a lot, right?
Would it, would it be out of line to consider, you know, using some of the money to guarantee, offer HUD vouchers?
So we can use the money for pretty much everything, but the, the problem with the vouchers is that there is a waiting list. People are getting to the top of the list. They have six months to find a place to live. They can't find a place to live. Having more vouchers isn't going to fix the problem of not having places to use, to utilize those vouchers.
We need places for warm bodies. The voucher system, like you said, and then, so if we get the stuff built, the people on the top of that list go first. And then, then you have waiting, so we need places to put, put people. We need somebody to build their head down somewhere with a roof over it.
So you're welcome to send me comments and suggestions. And then I'll incorporate all of that into the application process. And anything else? Okay, thanks for letting me at the very end of your meeting. I'm not drinking regular coffee all day, so I have been yawning, but I just kept me awake.
Thank you, Ann. We have one more item I've added. It's a purchase of APD equipment purchase request. And I think the chief, oh, who's going to speak to us today? Okay. Thank you, Brad. Captain Lyles. This item, it should be, I added 10D, 10D.
You turn on the mic?
Turn the mic on, please. That, is that better? Sorry about that. I'll go through this. It's, it's a purchase of counter narcotic equipment for the LINE Task Force. This, seeking recommendations from, or approval from the council for an exemption from competitive bidding because this is a sole source purchase of investigative equipment using Albany Police Department Equipment Replacement Funds. In response to obviously rising crime rates and drug trafficking and associated serious negative impacts on our community, one of those impacts has been overdose deaths. In the previous three years, we had seven, all right, two, one and four. So far this year in May, we've had seven overdose deaths this year. So in the previous three years, we've already met that match. And those are from illicit drugs. The LINE Task Force is actually.
Fentanyl drug?
Fentanyl is one of the primary drugs. The LINE Task Force is currently investigating five of those seven, which, when the LINE Task Force was formed, it was for engaging in investigations for drug trafficking organizations, for delivery, use, possession. But now that we have this lovely new drug that's creating all these overdoses, that takes up their time. And it continually requires additional equipment and resources. So getting back to the memo, again, this is a sole source vendor. The equipment will be utilized by LINE, by our task force, to assist with their major drug trafficking investigations, the source of which are coming, or is where fentanyl is coming into the, into our communities.
Captain, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Does everyone know what LINE Task Force is?
The LINE Task Force is a LIN inter-agency narcotics team, okay? And that was formulated once we were designated as a HIDA, a high-density drug trafficking area. We hadn't been for most of my career and it wasn't until we were designated that we started the LINE Task Force. We've had drug teams in the past, but the LINE Task Force through Oregon Idaho HIDA, they provide funding for this task force. And in this request, as a Oregon Idaho HIDA, they can't purchase and hold the equipment. They can purchase equipment for task forces, which is what we're requesting to do. We must purchase the equipment. They will reimburse us for that purchase. So they're essentially buying it, but we have to make the initial purchase. The equipment is $115,000. I submit a receipt for that purchase from our equipment replacement. As soon as they get the receipt, they write us the reimbursement check to refill our equipment replacement. As, as a smaller agency or mid-sized agency, we couldn't afford, I couldn't afford to purchase that piece of equipment for the task force. It's too expensive. But when a federal agency says, hey, how about if you get really good equipment and we'll pay for it? We just have to have it fronted first. Someone has to buy it first. The equipment has to be in someone's name, not Oregon Idaho HIDA. So it would be registered to the Albany Police Department, this equipment.
So is this, is this a single piece of equipment or multiple pieces of surveillance cameras and things?
I will answer in that it is a single piece of equipment, sir. Counselor Kopczynski. In addition, being the LINE Task Force piece of equipment, they would be responsible, the LINE Task Force would, for obviously care and upkeep, which is also coming out of the LINE budget, which they also go back to Oregon Idaho HIDA to get their budget from. So nearly all of their budget is supported by Oregon Idaho HIDA. Therefore, most of that would be already supported not by the department budget. Other than I need to expend Equipment Replacement Funds to make the initial purchase.
I have a strange question. Who funds Oregon Idaho HIDA?
The federal government does. Justin, if you can remember who they get their money from?
Thank you. And I apologize, I've been wondering who you were all evening. Did not recognize you. Good job.
So members of the task force are sitting here and in case they needed to answer questions, but they did not look like me. So I didn't want to point them out, but they are very, they're very tuned to this request because it only assists them. We're currently down a couple of people in the task force right now, which staffing shortages increase the workload. And the equipment that I'm requesting to, this exemption for, it allows them to utilize the equipment in person or remotely, thereby expanding
Capabilities.
The capabilities of the number, the number of full-time employees needed as well as the area of the footprint that we, that we investigate.
Counsel, any questions with the captain?
I just want to make a comment that with everything going on right now, I am totally in favor of anything that's going to help LINE, the police department or anything. This drug situation is so out of hand and I'm going to get to that with the business of the council. But I just, I just can't believe the fentanyl and what it's doing. And that instead of doing what they were meant to do, they're investigating because, you know. It's just, it's just sad, but this is something that needs to, needs to, we need to have.
Well, and additionally, in keeping with Counselor Novak, free is good. It, it supports the mission of Oregon Idaho HIDA and it supports our mission at the Department and LINE Task Force mission.
I appreciate what you're, what you're trying to do, but I'm, I guess I'm a little obtuse. Is there some secret or reason why you can't tell us what that piece of equipment is or does?
So.
Can I comment?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, Counselor Kopczynski, I've asked Captain Lyles to not go into that, those details. details in open session. If you'd like to hear more about it in executive session, we can, but it compromises our investigative capability as well as potentially puts some officers at safety risk.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have a, we do have an executive session coming up.
On this item?
Yes.
Well, we, we have an executive session coming up, but it's, it's not, at this point, it's for a different subject.
Correct.
If, if it is an opportunity, however, this evening to hear from Captain Lyles on this subject. And I would add that Captain Lyles needs to act quickly on this acquisition because there is a competitive process for this grant funding.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve an exemption from competitive bidding to promote the public interest and support the single source purchase of law enforcement investigative equipment using APD Equipment Replacement Funds. Second.
Counsel, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you, Captain.
Counsel, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, business from the council. I'll start, I started with you last time. Let's start with Counselor Olson this time.
One of my neighbors is getting his sewer line replaced and they're very happy that we have that program.
That it, Counselor? You good?
Yeah.
Thank you. Let's go over here to Counselor Kopczynski.
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Let's go back over here to Counselor Bartholomew on LINE.
Thank you. I just want to let everyone know that we are having our Pride Celebration on Saturday and please show up and support and have a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go Counselor Johnson.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if everyone read the newspaper this morning about what the Lynn County Commissioners are going to do. They plan on putting a measure on the ballot in, I read it and I'm trying to read my own writing here, but in, I think it's 2019, voters approved Measure 109 statewide to, for psychedelic mushrooms that.
Suicidal.
Yeah. And the Commissioners apparently are saying that Oregon passed it and it's basically for servicing, growing all this stuff. And Lynn County, the statewide, it passed, Lynn County said no. And it's raised questions for them and they have decided to put it toward the ballot because Lynn County voted no for this. And so they want to figure it out some way that they're going to do the area that's not the incorporated cities. And I wish I had more information, but I read it. And so I was going to ask our city attorney if there's any, if he could look into it, that we could maybe follow the same suit. And the other thing I have to say is that what, the LINE and Captain Lyles, everyone knows that this passing of Measure 110 was the biggest mistake that the voters have ever made. And, you know, I mean, how can you decriminalize hard drugs? You know, if you had someone in your life, and I think we probably all do, that have gone through that, you know, now fentanyl is just totally different than anything. And so I just, I don't know, Sean, can, is there anything that maybe you could just look into it to see if there's a way that we can do it?
So there's nothing currently we can do about 110. I wish we could, but 110 is, yeah, it is what it is right now. Hopefully that will change over, over the years. But when we're talking about the psychedelic mushroom, so what happened was a couple of years ago, this went to the voters, Oregon statewide passed the law that allowed for that, the use of that in facilities for, that dealt with that. Lynn County voted kind of the opposite of what the state did. The state was around, kind of, kind of round the numbers, 55, 45, somewhere in there. Lynn County was, was for, was, actually that was yes, statewide, 55, 45, yes. Lynn County was 55, 45, or somewhere close to that, or as a no. So the way the law works is that it goes into effect, I believe January 2nd, 2023, unless a city or county passes an ordinance or, that would put it on the ballot to their voters. And then their voters could decide that they didn't want those facilities here. It's very similar to how recreational marijuana was at the time. So really, we would have three options. We could do nothing and let, let it, we kind of roll with the state. We could have an ordinance passed that we would put it on the ballot for November, let the voters decide if they want it here or not. And I don't know how Albany particularly voted, I don't know how Lynn County overall voted, I don't know how about the city. Or we could regulate it through time, place, manner regulations like we do with recreational marijuana now. So one of those three things we could do.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. That's all you have, Counselor?
That's all I have.
Okay, Counselor Novak?
Thank you. This, I wasn't going to talk about 110, but I'm just curious if anybody even knows anybody who voted for that, because I don't know anyone. And I have a really hard time swallowing the fact that Oregon as a whole passed this, because I really take issue with all the overdoses, 700% more than before this passed. I don't think it actually passed. I think, I think it's baloney because I don't know anyone who voted for it. So that's not what I was going to talk about, though. So I have skipped business of the council. I haven't brought up some issues that I have, I have been letting my constituents down by not voicing their concerns. So tonight I have two of them for you. One is from a North Albany constituent who says, I mean, he sent, I know he sent at least Counselor Olson and myself photos of multiple car wrecks in his neighborhood, one of which he said was like 50 feet from his living room. North Albany, up Crocker, Gibson, that area where I happen to live, it's not rural anymore. We have so much build out, so much development, so many, what do you call them when they're all the same kind of homes in a, I can't think of the word.
Development.
Yeah, it's development, but at any rate, you're, you know, you're, you slow down to turn into, a car slows down to turn into their development and bam, they're hit from behind by someone who's going the speed that you could go there before all the build out. So this constituent is pleading with us to do something. I don't know if it's signage or what, but people need to slow down because it's no longer rural. And I can speak to that every single day I drive there and it's not, people need to slow down. I don't know what else to say about that. We need to do something. Another issue, particular to North Albany, Spring Hill Estates, Shady Lane, Harder Lane, Christmas Tree Lane, some other areas where on Nebregal, Nebregal and other roads where they don't have the storm drains and they're being charged the storm drain fee. And I have multiple constituents saying it's not right to make us pay for a service we don't have. And if you, you know, if, if, one of them said to me that if the city can tell the street sweepers not to come to a Benton County road because they say it's a Benton County road, call Benton County if you want the street cleaned, why can they not, in the same way, exempt the people who aren't, you know, who aren't getting that service with the storm drains? You can find the houses that, I'm sorry, I'm not doing well because this is my problem at the end of the night. I just, I can't even put my words together. But this, they're asking, they're asking the city to please take some sort of action to exempt them where they don't have that service and they're being forced to pay for a service that, that they, that they, that they don't get. I think there's one more thing, but as I say, it's two, I'm, I'm not being able to put my words together at all decently. So whatever I'm leaving out, I'll bring it next time and hopefully better than what I just did.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Smith?
Counselor Novak brings up something that there, there might be a light at the end of that tunnel. We have been asked, we're asked, every, the start of every legislative session to review a list of priorities that the League of Oregon City's lobbying team take on at the legislature. And we, I spent the afternoon today reviewing that extensive list. I've never seen one that long before, of a number of bills that, that, that are being considered for this next legislative session. One of them includes as a possibility the moving some local control to speed setting. Right now, speed, if you determine a speed zone, you have to go through the state. It's always been that way, but this would allow some local speed zone adjustments. So that, that caught my eye and I thought I would mention that. I've also been corresponding with an assortment of constituents, just this week, actually. They have been sending email to the, one sent one just to me, the other one sent them to the full council. And I can't resist responding to somebody when they need more information or correct information. I like to clear up rumors and innuendo. So I have, I have been corresponding on the topic of littering, on the topic of the waterfront project, suggestions for how to use the Wells Fargo property. And I haven't heard back from, well, I've heard back from my correspondent on the waterfront project who said, thank you for helping me understand what's going on. The other thing is a result of my compulsion to correspond with people who need information. It has resulted in my library board appointment this evening. Mr. Smith, no relation, is a resident of the Clover Ridge area. He started corresponding with me shortly after I was elected, just reached out as a, as his ward counselor and asked me, had some questions about budget issues and a number of other things. And I wrote back to him and we, he asked me more questions later and I answered and we met for coffee and now we're pen pals. And he's, and I nominated him for the library board. I've been trying to find a right fit for him as an appointee to something because he's a very bright man and has a lot of experience in a lot of different areas. And he's concerned about local government and he wants to be involved. Finally found a fit with the library board. We started talking about books and we're both avid readers. We have similar tastes, we have dissimilar tastes. We recommend books to each other and, and review them. And I thought, by golly, if anybody should be on the library board, it's Dave. So I asked him if he was interested. He was. He's familiar with Eric, our library director. He's a regular patron of the library, a strong supporter of public libraries. He said, yes, I'd love to be appointed. And so here we have it. Thank you very much for voting for him. That concludes my speech for this evening.
Yeah, thank you very much, Counselor Smith. A few things tonight. I am also reviewing the LOC information. So I really appreciate you digging into that. Also registering to go to the Oregon Mayor's Association Conference where I will be sharing our results of the If I Were the Mayor contest. That's coming up in August. And I'm excited about that. The Juneteenth celebration this Saturday was a success. Several hundred people came out and visited with us. There's businesses, social services organizations, a lot of kids. And it was really wonderful to have our police department meeting with people, talking to people. And I took some great pictures with some of our officers. And I was quite happy to see the turnout of our Albany people, people from Sweet Home, people from Salem, people from Carollis. And I want to thank Mayor Biff Traver for speaking at the event. And he's, he's an absolutely nice man. So that was a fantastic event. I am talking with an organization called ageplus.org. And I'll send the information so the council will have it. But they actually build affordable housing and they're looking to expand. And they have some projects going on right now. And they have a model that looks pretty promising. So we'll hold our breath until we actually get more information. And then Pride is coming up this weekend with the downtown cleanup. I'll try to be at both, but my wife dictates where I go on the weekend. So I'll let you know. The Pride is nine o'clock to 12:00 as well. So both of them are conflicting with each other, but I'll try to make both. And I'd love to see everyone downtown this weekend. And other than that, I'm done. And today, I'm 57 today. So I'm pretty excited about that. I made it, right? Another year. And then we're going to turn over to City Manager, but I have a special presentation. So Peter, would you join me down front?
Mayor, could we get that read into the record rather than, we couldn't hear it at all?
Oh, well, I'm sorry. I didn't have a microphone. That's right.
Yeah.
So my eyes helped me with that. She proves reads my stuff because I'm crunched for time right now.
Recording in progress.
Okay. So the next thing on the agenda, we're going to recess to executive session.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I say a few words?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. City Manager's report.
Just, just two, two quick things. Well, three, because the first one is to thank you for that kind letter. So I much appreciate it and it's an honor to serve as Albany City Manager. The first thing is, it's been a long evening tonight and thank you for your attention. I leave here to go up to Portland to pick up my sister from the airport and then come back. So thankfully, our executive session, which follows here, is going to be relatively short, I think. But I wanted to assure you that we make these meetings as concise and as, as brief as we can. We often seek opportunities to cancel meetings, if at all possible, or to combine meetings. The fact that a lot of the materials that you read in your packets, which we try to, I don't know if you've noticed, but we've tried to get them out to you earlier in the week than we used to. So we can give you a good five, six, even seven days sometimes to look at it. The packets are often very, very voluminous, but I'm afraid that that just reflects the growing complexity of the work that we do and the enterprise, the very complicated enterprise that you oversee. So again, we will try to be as concise and brief with, with the packets as possible. And the second and very short thing is that ARA, next ARA, scheduled ARA meeting is August 17th, actually.
Oh, we skipped.
Right.
No meeting in July, that's right.
Correct. So I'm happy to touch base with the HULCS and make sure that they know that. And that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, the city council will now meet an executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiations in accordance with ORS 192.660 subsection D, two subsection D, and police.
you're on a, 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 you're on a,